I'd like to call to order the October 28th, 2024 meeting of the Charleston County School Board of Trustees. I would ask everybody to please stand as we observe a moment of silence for those that we may have lost with our educational community and in support of the decades staff and success of our students. Thank you. Ms. Watley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please sit. Onto item one C, which is the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Roberson.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to move item five F to the bottom of the audit and finance section.
I second it.
Yes, five F.
Yes, I want to move down.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any questions? Any reasons why we shouldn't do it?
That's obviously going to be one of the longest agenda items that we have on our agenda. So we might as well move it down to the bottom, get all the information out first and go out and get to the IGA portion of it.
Okay. Get all the reporting, get everything done.
So it's really just moving down four items. Yeah. And Ms. Waters will be attending by Zoom for the IGA request. So. Are there any objections?
I object. It wasn't done ahead of time.
Wait, say it again. Say it again. I missed what you said. Can you say it again?
I said, I object that it was not brought to the attention ahead of time when it was posted.
It's moving over one agenda spot from F to G.
And I really don't have because when it was originally just discussed with me prior to the meeting, Mr. Calhoun wasn't going to be here at the meeting, being going to be late. But I have no problem with it. It's just moving down to the last items. So if there are no objections other than the one objection, all in favor, vote aye. Aye. So the agenda is amended with that one changing of the item of the IGA down to.
Did that get a majority vote? I don't think it did.
Could you do a roll call vote?
We'll do it. You want to put it in the system, please? Thank you.
It passes for yeas.
For yeas, yay. And the motion passes. Onto. What I'd like to do is to emotion on items one D, which is the adoption of October 2nd, 2024 board meeting meetings, items one.
We need to vote on the actual agenda now. We need to vote on the agenda. We voted.
Absolutely correct. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Please put it up for vote, Ms.
I don't believe the previous motion passed.
Four yays, one abstained.
Yes. So there are eight members present and it only got, it got four out of eight. It got four out of eight in, in favor, which is not a passing vote. It has to have a majority of the members present have to vote in favor.
Abstain does not say whether you are for or against. This is basically a not.
Asking for parliamentary really. I believe that the language is a majority of members present.
Four yay, three nay, abstain is an equal vote.
And a tied vote fails.
No, it's not a tie vote. Abstain is not a no vote.
We have a point of order on Stan. I'm asking the parliamentary just to double check.
Abstain is not a no vote. If that's the case, the abstain can go to the yes vote. I can tell you the answer to it. Abstain is not a no vote. Abstain is just, I'm just here.
Mr. Johnson, can you give some clarification, please?
As a parliament, I don't get. To be sure, I understand the situation is that there are four yays, three nays, and perhaps one abstention.
Absolutely correct.
That's the passing vote.
Passing vote. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on. So we have to vote on the adopted motion to amend the agenda. And the agenda is passed as amended. Now, moving on to items one D, E, and F, which I would like to do as a collective whole, and that's the approval of the October 2nd, 2020, 24 board meeting minutes. Approval of the October 14th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Minute Meetings, Minutes, and item one F, which is approval of the October 14th, 2024 Special Call Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Grabowski. Yeah, I request that we split the question. The, yeah, I request that we split the question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly.
The minutes for the 14th have an inaccuracy that I'd like to correct for. So we need the 14th to be split off.
Which 14?
Okay, we'll do each one individually then.
We're going to the whole 14.
Okay, so. I'm going to withdraw the motion. We're just going to go through the minutes line item by line. So I'd like to have a motion for, on item one D, approval of the October 2nd, 2024 Board Minute Meetings. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any objections? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Down to item one E, which is approval of the October 14th, 2024 Committee of Whole Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any objections to the minutes as posted?
Yes, I, the minutes currently reflect that the motion to adopt the agenda was made by Ms. Watley and seconded by me. It was made by Ms. Watley and seconded by Mr. Calhoun.
Any objections to the minutes as corrected? Then we will vote on the minutes as corrected. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second? Any objections? Hearing none. The minutes are approved as corrected. Down to item one F, approval of the October 14th, 2024 Special Call Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any objections to the minutes as posted? Hearing none. The minutes are approved as written. Onto item two, special recognition. Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Mrs. Denny, Mrs. Denny will cover the first special recognition this evening.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Ryan Bach as our special recognition tonight of our first responders.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski, Ms. Watley, members of the board, and Ms. Huggins. It's an honor, it's been years since I've met you all. Every day across CCSD, first responders were diligently alongside our teachers, support staff, and administrators to keep our schools safe. In the past, we have recognized the important role that our school resource officers play in our school safety program. Today, in honor of National First Responders Day, I would like to recognize and publicly thank a few all-stars from our other public safety partners. While CCSD receives great support from across the public safety community, the individuals standing before you consistently go above and beyond to demonstrate a strong commitment to school safety. Billy Barnes is the deputy fire chief in the town of Mount Pleasant. Chief Barnes is a great resource for CCSD within the fire community and has been a strong partner in the creation of the district's fire safety program and the district's student reunification plan. When we ever need to talk to a fire-related issue, Chief Barnes is someone we know will answer our call and help in whatever way he can. Allison Burrell is the deputy director of the Charleston County Consolidated Emergency Communications Center, or ECC for short. Deputy Director Burrell and her team frequently notify us when they learn of an incident that may impact a district's school or a district's classroom. Deputy Director Burrell had also created numerous opportunities for collaboration, such as having our team train ECC staff on school safety procedures and terminology, and helping us with procedures and training for our own 24/7 security operations center. Mike Jalazza is a deputy chief with the Charleston Fire Department. As the chief fire marshal in the city of Charleston, we frequently collaborate, Chief Jalazza, on matters related to fire safety, inspections, and procedures that help bolster fire safety in CCSD. He will also proactively reach out to the district if he hears fire units dispatched to a school for labor incident. Chief Jalazza recently assumed responsibilities within the city's emergency management program, and he has added our team to the city's emergency management briefings, which helps significantly in our ability to prepare for and respond to our recent weather events. Brittany Martin is the chief deputy coroner for Charleston County. The death of a student or staff member anywhere in our community has a profound effect on the students and staff at their schools. And these delicate situations can be difficult to navigate. Chief Martin understands this impact and should closely work for the district to ensure we are notifying our communities when it is appropriate and providing the support and resources needed. Unfortunately, Chief Martin and I speak more than I would like, but she is always available to us 24 hours a day in all things. Kimberly Wynn is the deputy chief and medical operations manager for Charleston County EMS. Chief Wynn is helping the district create an annex on our emergency operations plan that focuses on responding to a criminal mass violence incident, particularly in the area of victim services and community support. Chief Wynn is proactive in coordinating with our team during medical calls that involve schools or school buses, and she is a great thought partner in developing plans to help us to account for students or any medical emergencies while complying with medical privacy laws. We are also honored to have with us here today Jim Lake, the director of Charleston County's Emergency Communications Center, and Bobby Joe O'Neil, the Charleston County coroner. I want to thank them and the other agency beds who could not be here today for all their support. On National First Responders Day, I am truly honored to recognize these individuals. Chief Barnes, deputy director Burrell, Chief Jalazza, Chief Martin, and Chief Wynn. In a world where you and your colleagues face a lot of challenges, we thank you for what you do to bolster school safety in Charleston County every day. We are incredibly grateful for your partnership.
Thank you. We will now move on to item three, which is the public comment before I turn it over to Ms. Watley.
Mr. Grabowski. Mr. Grabowski, is my microphone working, Mr. Grabowski? Mr. Grabowski, before we go on to three A, we had one more special recognition. I'm so sorry. Before, before principals leave the room, I, this is National Principals Month, but from my perspective, every day is National Principals Day. The work they lead in our school simply would not be possible without their thoughtfulness, their dedication, their commitment to all of our children. Last week, we met together at the lead meeting and talked about National Bosses Day, which actually was last week as well. We talked about the importance of school administrators being brave, thinking outside of the box, being service-oriented, and being student-centered. And I can say for a fact with most confidence that the leaders in this district, all 88 of them, lead with such heart. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you a lot about the success of our students over the course of the last 18 months. And that success simply would not be possible without excellent principals in our building leading the way, who are focused on kids and who are focused on achieving results that would not be possible without strategy, thoughtfulness, and dedicated leadership. So tonight, National Principals Month, I want to thank these leaders, many who began their day before the sun came up, many of whom who won't get home tonight until after the sun sets, for working alongside me, for working alongside the folks sitting around me, for working with families, and for working for kids each and every day. Thank you for your commitment to our district. You are what makes CCSD great. Let's give them a round of applause. So we'll recognize each group briefly. The elementary principals, let's see how well they coordinate exiting. Elementary principals will, will come up first. If you just want to come this way, followed by middle school principals and then high school principals. Y'all looking good as single file line.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. Hi. Good. How are you? Thank you. Thank you. Looks like you got it. Thank you.
Okay. Elementary school principals. You all look good. Yes. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Hi. Oh, no.
These are our middle school principals. We're honored to have several highs and several charter school principals here with us tonight.
Kevin, you got to stand on the floor, Kevin.
Lot of paranoia.
Magnitude of the staff. It's amazing. They're a little off-center. Just missing with my OCD.
Y'all look amazing. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you, middle school principals. And high school principals. I know. You three trying to show off. Dr. If you may, yeah, y'all might have to come down here. You Ryan and Bria, you Ryan and Rich, go down there with Anna. These are our wonderful high school principals. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you again for your service to our kids. Thank you, Chair Grabowski. Thank you so much, Mr. Grabowski, and thanks for taking time to honor our, our school leaders.
So, public members, if you would like to move up closer, we can see the eyes. Come on up. The brave few. Onto item three, public comment. Before I turn it over to Ms. Watley, I just want to remind you, if you plan to address the board during the public comment period, please keep your remarks focused on the relevant agenda items or issues affecting the district. Key word here is issues, not individuals. Ms. Watley.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Move this up a little bit. We have eight individuals signed up for in-person public comments. I'll call you four at a time. When I call you, if you would, when you approach the podium, please state your name before you go into your comment. Each person will get two minutes. We're going to start with Anthony Bryant, Bria Alston, Daniel Middleton, and David, please forgive me for mispronouncing your last name, but Muzon. Muzoni?
Anthony G. Bryant. I'm here on item F, too. I actually was after 42th door to be his annual Brian president, and he G. Bryant and A. And my people concerned in terms of this tax bill, my family got, they got our tax bill 37 years, same address, or 50 to 60 address. We never got a deferment of nothing. We got 14% in accommodation tax. You're right. It got to be big. With the first tax, Mr. Navarro, who worked for Golden Sachs, and y'all speculators? Are y'all speculating with tax payers money? We don't pay y'all speculating. We pay y'all to basically take care of these children. The exchange of the money which you talking about is going to administrators to administer minister children. It is not, it is not going to the children. Listen, Navarro was very wealthy. I mean, he got a ton of money. I mean, he can buy that property. Let him buy the property. First thing you step in and get involved with your money, will be our money. You got too many people in the peninsula of Charleston that don't have a house no more because of Tiff district by the city of Charleston. The city of Charleston has created the disparity that we live under this very day. How can you say as a Republican, you a fiscal conservative? This is not fiscal conservative at all. This is irresponsible leadership to the minimum. So don't give me a deferment. Give, give my family your mama deferment. Give her her own money. We be go to the store, point of sale taxes, half same sales tax, point of sale, point of sale for every tax we pay. We don't go to Walmart food line and say, give me an affirming on my, on my, on my bread and milk. You playing with the money now. Now we might stand up and be fiscal conservatives as you saying. Don't send me no bill, and you go getting those too. You got to be. Mr. Navarro laughing all the way to the back.
Good evening. My name is Bria Alston, and I am here with a group of exceptional high school students that are located in the back left there. They call themselves Youth in Action. This group was formed as a partnership with the E3 Foundation and the YWCA. These students have been working for months on their self-advocacy skills, and I am so excited to have them use their platform here with me today. I sincerely appreciate you hearing their thoughts and suggestions. Not only do I have two students that are speaking to you tonight, but we have many more in witness here to see this democratic process. Thank you all for your time and your advocacy on behalf of all students in Charleston County.
Hi. My name is Daniel Middleton. I'm a 17, 17-year-old student who attend Low County Southern Academy. Our, our life is at the physical and emotional, physical and mental safety of students like myself, though with ADD. As a student with ADD, I often feel overwhelmed in a traditional school environment. There are days when I struggle to focus, and this can lead to physical feeling frustration. According to CDC, approximately 6.1 million children are, in the U.S., are dying of ADD. This means that students are experiencing similar challenges. To solve these issues, I propose many major changes. First, having quiet spaces in schools to those students who can take breaks or regroup to be quiet and peaceful. This can help students like me to restore focus without the distraction of a crowded classroom. Second, providing flexible learning options such as alternate seating arrangements and alternative teaching methods might help in supporting various learning types. For example, instructing movement breaks or hand-on activities could make a big difference in students who need to be active and stay interested. Lastly, I would like to see more professional training for teachers to help students with ADD. Thank you for allowing me to speak on my experience for physical and emotional safety of students with ADD.
There was work to be done because it hurt me when I witnessed Chinese students and helped them discipline the school. I feared that this issue of student isolation has stayed on sorts of covers specifically black students. For example, according to data from the U.S. Department of Education, black students are significantly more likely to be suspended from school than other students of racial and gender groups. For example, according to data from the US Department of Education, black students are significantly more likely to be suspended from school than other students of racial and gender groups. What I mean by this is basically basing on standard or ordinary charter individuals. I propose that CCSD creates a training system that will provide consistent training for staff to recognize and mitigate duplicit bias. Another idea is we will adopt restorative justice, restorative approaches like peer mentoring, tier intervention systems, and many more ways to stop these inadequate disciplinary practices. I appreciate you for taking the time to fear me concerning this question, thank you.
And the last four, Char, Char Fitzwater, Frances Beallette, Karen Byko, and Maurice Washington.
Hello, I'm Charlotte. I'd like to speak with you about the TIF. Looked at the net present value analysis that you reviewed, and there's a crucial flaw. It doesn't include the cost of incremental educational services. It doesn't include when you put a twenty-five million or thirty-five million dollar new building in place projected for 2025, that there you have to have teachers, disabilities, and all of the things that these folks worked so hard to have excellent education system. That's a huge flaw in this analysis. Another flaw in the analysis is the discount rate. Discount rate used is not revealed, but there's also a difference when you have a higher risk proposal versus a lower risk proposal. There should be a higher discount rate on anything that's more risky. The commitment associated with this TIF reaches to 2062 or longer, that's thirty-six years from now or longer. That's, this is a huge commitment to make on behalf of all of us as taxpayers, as people who, I'm a grandparent, two grandchildren in these schools. It's important to be responsible in this, and I think it's imperative that you take these things into account. I think these folks are going to care about, be taken into account also. Another thing that's included in it is, is space in this building, thirty thousand square feet. If you need a hundred and fifty more people to have space in this building that you're transferring from somewhere else, what's going on? How much is our overhead cost? I don't think they are that rich in, in the overhead expenses for the home office kinds of operations. Sorry, corporate background, have to use those words. So, my hope for this review to consider this area carefully and make a decision that includes the long-term impacts, the short-term impact, and perhaps negotiating for something different or just plain saying no.
Sure, please state your name first.
Frances Baylock. At the first overview slide from Triumph Associates, associates says tax increment financing district, TIF districts, are created by local governments to spur development, redevelopment in a blighted area that might not otherwise occur. What is blighted about prime property in the peninsula right next to this tourism, tourism center of Charleston? The most popular travel destination in the world is going to receive a massive amount of traffic. What is blighted about that? What is, what needs to be done to take resources, potential resources away from schools and children to help that happen? I mean, is the developer a, you know, a scrappy upstart LLC from local high schools that's trying to get into the development business? No, you've got a billionaire who can afford to pay. And it's only fair that he pays his fair share like I do, like the gentleman and his mother who spoke before. So, I just have to ask you, who are you working for right now? Is this, why are you doing this? What is the reason for it? Is there one among five of you that will take a pretty choice today and vote against this? Because thirty years from now, my grandchild is going to be standing here going, what happened to all the money? Why don't we have the resources? Why are there still inequities? Why aren't there still inability to buy ground around services? What happened? I was going to stand here today and look into camera and say, I'm sorry, I tried. I really, really tried.
David, Karen Byko, I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no to entering the IGA participating in Union Pier TIF. Unless and until a compelling reason is presented for a vote three hundred and forty-five to five hundred and ninety dollars intended to educate our children. On October one, the district's financial advisor, First Triumph, made a presentation in the Audit and Finance Committee that values the return of the top floor of Seventy-Five Calhoun from the city of Charleston to the district at approximately a hundred million dollars through 2062. On October eight, the CFO published an opinion, a post report, and she stated that a hundred million dollar savings during the term of the TIF should get a school board to a yes on the TIF. Three days later, on October eleven, First Triumph updated its analysis to reduce the operational savings of the city vacant in the top floor of Seventy-Five Calhoun to seventeen point six million dollars. Now that the financial benefit during the term of the TIF has been reduced from a hundred million to seventeen point six million, does the CFO still believe the board should get a yes? And if so, why? Does a seventeen point six million dollar benefit take into account the incremental cost of eighty parking spaces and the cost of repaying the exterior of the building? Or is this number still overstated? Why is CCSD taking a vote on the IGA before the city of Charleston holds the very first public hearing and public comment period on November four? How did students in our rural areas benefit from giving up tax revenue to a development in downtown Charleston? Why is the school district being asked to bear the largest share of the cost of this deal when it is the city of Charleston and the developer getting the bond to share the benefit? This district has a massive amount of leverage. I don't think they're using it. There are way too many questions and far less benefit coming back to the district to agree to this. And unless and until there's compelling reason to agree to it, I urge the board to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening. And thank you for your service, Maurice Washington is my name. I just want to briefly speak about the TIF had been on the front end of the scheme as a city councilman, member of Charleston City Council back in the nineties, many of which the school district bought into. I want you to know there are a number of things wrong with TIF districts. Not all that. But it does change the makeup of the community. It does impact and enforce justification. Now, some of us can afford increasing property values, we take it for granted, no big deal. But there are a lot of people, white and black, on fixed income, that cannot take another penny in the increase of their property tax. So, I want to ask just a couple of questions because I listened to the, I think it was the October eleventh of Finance Audit Committee meeting. Your financial advisor used the term assumption and assumed fourteen times in a five-minute presentation. Have you looked at his disclaimer, their disclaimer on the document that they are asking you to review? I would imagine that would be really very interesting to take a look at. Are the numbers based on the spreadsheet from the city of Charleston's Union Pier TIF? That is critical because we used to love to play with spreadsheets. Do you base those numbers on the spreadsheet of the city? Have they exposed the spreadsheet on the TIF, Union Pier TIF? If not, you would be doing a disservice to your constituents, your students, if you were to move forward without taking a careful look at that. Does the developer need a hundred percent of the TIF on the front end? Or could they develop the project and be reimbursed on the back end? Just a few questions I think you should conclude.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, there are, there are a few items I think that Mr. Prentice wants to clarify following public comments per policy if allowable.
Can we first go through the online?
Yeah, if you allow me to just summarize.
Sure, absolutely. At the will of the board, for sure, thank you.
Yeah, I actually think that's a good idea, thank you. So, the summary for the online public comments is Edith, one for Edith Fryerson Gymnatorium multipurpose building, and then six for the Union Pier TIF. And with that, Mr. Prentice, would you mind clarifying or enlightening or elaborating on, on the public comments regarding the TIF?
Yes, ma'am, and I was taking some notes as the speakers were speaking, so I hope I didn't miss anything. I want to clarify a few items, one of which is the notion that the board would vote before the public hearing is held by the city of Charleston, and that is baked in the law. If the board does not take action prior to the public hearing, the law assumes that the school district is automatically opted in. So, the only right that the school district has is to opt out of the TIF, or of course, in this case, as we're recommending, to participate with the IGA as a condition of participating in the TIF. So, if the school district didn't do anything before November fourth, then we would be participating at a hundred percent with no IGA, which is the standard process under the law. The other thing I want to clarify is, again, purely from the law standpoint, the onus of determining blight stands on the city with the redevelopment plan, and so that information's contained within the redevelopment plan. There's nothing related to the notion of blight or not being blighted with respect to Union Pier, any TIF district contained in the IGA with the city of Charleston. It's just simply the request under the law to the school district. See if there's some other things under here that I need to hit on. The numbers that we received for the analysis, those numbers came from the redevelopment plan from the city of Charleston. They hired a financial consultant that put that redevelopment plan together, and so they actually gave us their files to pull that into the models. Yes, those numbers did come from the city of Charleston, and they are assumptions because at this point in time, the way that this is, is being set up is there has to be, you know, development plan and a, you know, redevelopment. So, plan development district established, I guess, proper planning code for that to be developed the way that it's going to be intended to be developed. So, that's again assumptions based on the absorption of what could be established in private investment on the parcels out at Union Pier. I think that's everything that I jotted down, but I'm happy to get into further discussion as we get to that item on the agenda.
Excellent. That concludes public comment. Onto item four, which is superintendent's report and student outcomes. Ms. Huggins, your day to shine.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
And staff.
Absolutely, thank you, board. This section tonight combines the SEC student outcomes portion of tonight's agenda with the superintendent's report. It is a tad more lengthy than the superintendent's report typically is, simply because it does join the SEC portion of tonight's agenda. Originally, we discussed when we first began talking about superintendent's evaluation that in October, I would provide a two-page report to the board on the accomplishments of the district and its students over the course of my tenure. And so, in this presentation tonight, although the evaluation timeline has not yet been confirmed or the instrument itself, I will attempt to do some of those things. Starting out, of course, Maggie, with Slide one, which is an outstanding state report card among our schools. In tonight's spotlight, it's about an eight-minute spotlight. It will highlight three schools specifically. Fryerson Elementary School, I believe Principal Smalls is still here with us, which had an unprecedented growth over the course of the year. In addition to Zucker Middle School, I think Chris Haynes is still here with us, and North Charleston High School led by Principal Darby, which grew from unsatisfactory to needs improvement this year. So, tonight's spotlight will showcase the success of these three schools, which again, we believe is replicated throughout the system. So, Maggie, thank you.
The report card rating at Edith L. Fryerson was one to be really proud of. It shows that we have made a substantial amount of growth. We were unsat for about two to three years, and now we have moved to a rating of excellent, which is superb because it's like going from the bottom to the top. Unsat is the absolute bottom, and excellent is the absolute top. Our theme for the last two years have been, when we learn, we grow. And we have truly been learning and growing. And so, I want to put some emphasis on the word grow because that's what we've seen, lots of growth in many areas, not only academically, but socially, emotionally, behaviorally, things of that matter. And so, we've been intentional with the things that we're doing, instruction. When we look at data, we use that data to inform our decision, to drive our instruction. We've been having meaningful PLCs, and if we want our kids to grow, we first have to grow our teachers. And so, that's their focus, and then the teachers turn that focus in their classroom to their kids of, of growing them. I said to my parents when I first started here that it was my priority for this school to no longer be a priority school. And so, by doing that, again, going back to the word intentional, I've been intentional about what I've been doing.
The teachers and the coaches and the admin, of course, has done a good job of marrying Montessori and public education together. We're still abiding by Dr. Montessori's materials, we still use her materials, we still use the layout of what she wanted a Montessori classroom to look like, being that it be small groups or one-on-one instruction. We have our support guides who really facilitate the independent work of the students while I'm in the lessons. But in those lessons, I'm able to use the data from iReady and the data from our formative assessments on the public education side of it to really tailor to the needs of the students.
In class, we have different subjects, and we do a lot of lessons each day to get good grades, and we usually practice them. Maybe we practice them for maybe like two weeks, and then we can move on to another subject. But by then, we can usually get that in our head, and usually after that, we might have a test coming up that we can remember those facts and help us get good grades.
So, we go to a lesson first, and then we got a science book that we do as a follow-up, and we can, and we can work together on it. We can work with a teacher or some students.
Intentionality, I believe that's the best way to describe what we did last year to ensure that our scholars group. So, one of the things we really jumped into was PLCs. Two years ago, we were one of the first teams to be, to volunteer to be a part of the PLC DDI process. We brought that back to the school, we struggled through it, and we learned from it. And then, last year, we were able to fully implement it with all of our core teachers. That was a game changer for us as a school. Being able to have teachers come in, come in once a week and work with our instructional coaches to learn the PLC process, to take what they have learned in the PLC process back to their classrooms and then implement it with their scholars really helped us with our game. We also use Schoolmate Grow a lot, that's our classroom walkthrough tool. And going into the classrooms to ensure that what we learned about in PLCs were being implemented in the classroom to produce positive scholar results. As well as our Z period. Now, we have a flex period that meets forty minutes every day, and during that, for three days a week last year, we did Alex math support. Digital math support is a great program that we use that we could watch our scholars grow at the same time that we were seeing them grow in class. We implemented Achieve 3000 in our social studies and science classes as part of the support in there to assist with literacy. So, those things allowed our success rates on SC Ready to grow last year.
At Jerry Zucker Middle School, we saw a major increase with our test scores just based on the curriculum that we have been using. And I think that helps students just basically engage with what they were reading in class. And I think engagement has a lot to do with how students respond to learning the content that they're learning.
In English class, we see new words that we're learning, learning. And math class is to write on a book that we have and answer questions that teacher help us. Like explaining the first, the first exercise, and then we did the rest.
Well firstly, we've been blessed with a marvelous district level leader by the name of Trevor Stradman. We've also been blessed with a superlative curriculum instruction specialist. And with the leadership that we got together to procure a school of innovation by means of approval from the district in terms of the school board superintendent as well as the state. And under the umbrella of school of innovation, we were able to do things that we necessarily would not have been able to do had we not this status. So, that's basically first and foremost. And as a result of the school of innovation, we are able to attune the needs of our teachers and students as opposed to one size fits all. Our PDs and our PLCs are quite different than any other schools. They are curtail for the individual onsite problem that we have. So, that would be the answer in terms of our improvements was the vision to procure that status that North Charleston High School, part of vernacular, could do its own thing.
What the school of innovation has allowed us to do are so many things. One of the biggest thing is seat time. With that, we can truly personalize instruction for our students. Our population, as well as many other populations, are behind often. are behind often with their graduation progress, or even with just being promoted to the next grade. So we, once we were approved as a School of Innovation, we actually began credit recovery pods. And basically, it was not somewhere that was a punishment to go, that was demoralizing to go. This was somewhere where students finally felt success, where they hadn't in the past. So teachers worked really hard. They developed personalized learning plans for these students. Students would take a diagnostic, figure out what standards do I know, what do I not know yet? And then they'd have a unique learning plan for them. So they could move faster or slower if need be. What that also did for our school report card is helped our graduation rate, because we were able to get students back on track for a four-year graduation. And then last year was the first year for the student success rate, which are ninth graders. It was on the report card for how many, the percentage of them being promoted to 10th grade. And that was one of our biggest gains. I can't say gains. It was the first year. But I think we really did a great job, a great job with that. With that also, we have our ML pods. And of course, our ML growth is a large part of our school report card. About a third of our school is now the ML population. So that pod with the waiver, we are able to have students have truly personalized instruction based on their WITO levels, based on their English levels and their math levels, to have personalized instruction in a station-rotation model with a math teacher, an ML teacher, and an English teacher. And what that has done for just the success of our students and their confidence with the English language and their other classes, as well as on the assessment that they have to take, has been truly amazing.
There's different ways that they teach us. For example, station rotation, where we have like three stations. On the first one, the teacher will give us like direct instructions on the topic. Then we will have time for individual practices. And then we will have like technology where we have more time to practice. Or like the people that have master can help other students. And well, that the teachers are always there for you, helping you. For example, if you want to go to college, or you want to get a job, or you need help in anything, you can always go to the teachers and ask for help. And if they can't do it, they will find someone that can.
Again, we're very proud of our schools. You got to hear from an elementary, a middle, and a high school principal about their work elevating the growth and achievement of their students. The next slide will share the success of Edith L. Fryerson, which is one school of four ratings. If you would stand to be recognized, Latrice, for your exceptional work. In just one short year, Ms. Smalls is a first-year, she's a second-year principal now. But in one short year, Mrs. Smalls was able to work with stakeholders, students, teachers, to elevate the achievement, not only the achievement, but also the growth of students at Fryerson from unsatisfactory to excellent. That's never happened in Charleston County. We're not sure it's happened in South Carolina. We're still waiting to hear back from the state. But I want to thank Mrs. Smalls, the team around her, Dr. Swearingen, Ms. Quinetta White, who is her mentor directly, for their work alongside of Ms. Smalls. And Smalls, great, great job. Here you'll see that we have one school that moved up two ratings. This is incredibly, incredibly hard to do. Charleston Progressive Academy here on the peninsula has now gone from below average to good. Principal Wanda Sheets suggests that it's consistency, her work around the leader in me, her focus on chronic absenteeism, that has really moved the bar for her students. So we celebrate Charleston Progressive tonight. The next slide, Maggie, will showcase that 31 of our schools here in Charleston County are rated excellent. If you want to take a second and look over that list of schools, that is a supreme achievement for a district this size. Many of these schools maintain their excellent status, which is not easy to do. The next slide, Maggie. Four schools improved by 10 or more overall rating points. Those include Edith L. Fryerson, Charleston Progressive Academy, that we've already highlighted, also James Island Elementary, over on, obviously, James Island in District 3. It is now considered a good school. And Mitchell Elementary School, moved from unsatisfactory status to below average, a few points shy of average. So exceptional growth in these schools. And again, I attribute that to leaders who are focused on students, to central staff leaders who provide support, and to communities who are engaged in the education process for their children. Maggie, next slide. 34 schools improved their overall rating points. You'll see here, five to nine points. There's a list on the left. And one to four points, a list on the right. We're incredibly proud of the success students and schools are demonstrating in regards to achievement and growth, in addition to engagement with stakeholders. Maggie? You'll be proud to know that we have two of the top 10 high schools in South Carolina, Academic Magnet and Charleston School of the Arts. We also have five of the top 10 middle schools in the state. Charleston County School of the Arts Middle School, Moultrie, Lang &amp; Cario in Mount Pleasant, and Beust Academy. We have a top 10 elementary school also in Mount Pleasant, led by Kim Jackson, Mount Pleasant Academy. Here you'll see overall, our achievement on ELA in grades three through eight is consistently improving from two years ago at 53.3% student scoring meets and exceeds to 63.3% last year. And on math, you'll see a near 5% increase from 2021 to 2023, with 49.2% of students scoring meets and exceeds in 2021, 22, and 54.1% in 23, 24. Around college and career readiness, which you know embodies the board's goals, you'll see here a significant double-digit increase in regards to graduating students who are either college or career-ready, from 70.2% in 2022 to 80.5%, which is a significant accomplishment for this system over two years. So I want to thank the board for their focus on student growth and achievement. That is contributing to graduating more students. You'll see here that increased from 22 to 24, with nearly 90% of our students graduating on time, ready for post-secondary success. I'm also proud to share, we let our principals go, that we have two, there are four in South Carolina. We have two of South Carolina's four Blue Ribboned Schools, Beust Academy and Academic Magnet. I know those schools host students who come ready, in most instances, to learn. But this is an outstanding accomplishment for them in regards to stakeholder engagement and thoughtfulness around planning and execution. We also were notified just last week that we have a South Carolina School of Excellence in Arts Education Award out at Angel Oak, out in District 9 on Johns Island, which is a significant accomplishment, led by Judy Condon, who has also been recognized as a state winner for her leadership around the arts. And Maggie, next slide. We have a National Blue Ribboned School of Excellence. We were just notified last week for the Lighthouse Award, Styles Point Elementary. That's a five-year designation that's awarded for meeting or exceeding criteria in these areas, if you want to note those on the screen. So we have a lot to celebrate alongside you this year in regards to student achievement and school recognition. Maggie, we'll go quickly on to the next slide to highlight a few things. We're not going to read all of these things, but as a quick overview, as promised, to you, I want you to know around those board goals and guardrails, how we're doing as a system. One, in communications with our strategic engagement, as promised, we've tried to be very thoughtful about how we engage all sorts of stakeholders. We've added meets and greets. Last week, for example, Ms. McKinney was with us at North Charleston High School. We've added coffee talks. Mrs. Watley and Mrs. McKinney were with us two weeks ago, I think, in West Ashley at a coffee. We've done various Facebook Lives, roundtables, and advisory groups to include literacy, interfaith, the business roundtable, and we have a retired educators advisory group. We've also started regular mayor's meetings with the mayors in the tri-county area, legislative body briefings. We have an upcoming breakfast with the legislative delegation. You'll see here, we now bring in the constituent board chairs regularly to meet with them. We launched the D4 Joint Commission, which I updated you on last week. We have a teacher forum and a principal's cabinet, which is ongoing. We also have various school supports, a new website. We launched an official Facebook page for parents this year and community members. You'll see here some other data points around how we communicate. We've tightened up our FOIA processes, how we communicate with the press, how we communicate about weather delays. And you'll see here various recognition, spotlights on CCSD. We recently launched the Heart of Our Work, which features our students, which is where our focus really should be. Next, a little bit about the North Charleston Joint Commission. Mr. Darby was sorry he had to leave. He had to attend to a wake for a staff member's family member. But you'll see here, some early recommendations came out of the commission just last week, along with D4 principals, expanding access to CTE offerings in these schools, enhancing access to community centers, which would be required through a joint partnership with the city, which Mayor Burgess is committed to, collaborating on joint land purchases for more recreational and school use, launching a comprehensive community involvement campaign to reduce truancy, gun violence, and substance abuse. And then you'll see things over here that we really want to focus in North Charleston, which is the recruitment and retention of highly qualified educators, more professional development around MLLs, safe after-school spaces, and our efforts with Dr. Coakley to decrease chronic absenteeism. So we're really thrilled with the recommendations that have come out of the commission. The team will continue to work with us on actionable next steps. Very quickly, here are some accomplishments over the course of the last year. We've achieved, as you know, Cognia International Accreditation, NACI Accreditation for several of our schools. We're focused on continuous improvement, as you know. We hosted a board retreat around Cognia's recommendations for board governance. All of our school and district renewal plans were approved. We've also recommended alternative school reconfiguration, which started this year and will launch with Dr. Coakley in January. TPA will move to the old James Island Middle School campus so that we can expand services to kids who need the most. We're continuing student data reviews, which we started under Don Kennedy's leadership, or re-energized our academic council and family data conferences. And we continue to update you on our progress monitoring efforts around student growth and achievement. Sometimes a little lengthy to a fault, but it demonstrates our commitment to student and student outcomes. Here you'll see that we've internally, all the chiefs have, again, to such a great team, aligned our efforts around the vision and mission of the board, again, which is to increase readiness, college and career readiness, focused on algebra, literacy, and those skills students need to be able to achieve post-secondary. In human resources this year, we launched our first day with no vacancies. We've launched a very successful co-teaching residency program over at Pinehurst. Mr. Palagi is a few points from good, and he holds the highest MLL population in the state of South Carolina. So I want to thank Bill and his team for their efforts around that co-teaching program, something that we're looking to hopefully expand, which takes a lot of strategy and thoughtfulness, but we are seeing it yield excellent results for students. You'll see here, multiple new hires in regards to Teach Charleston, Men of Charleston Teach, and Carolina CAP. Again, we'd like to have more of these programs. And full transparency are fairly expensive, but they're yielding positive results for the district overall in regards to attracting candidates who bring varied cultural experiences to the district. We've also launched an early childhood education bachelor's program whereby classified staff can get credentials to teach. So we're thrilled with that. Proving schools, I want to thank Dr. Clav, Ms. Simmons, and the associate superintendents for their work around the instructional framework. You've heard about that in our recent meetings and what that means, how teaching looks and sounds in classrooms where students are highly engaged. Just two weeks ago, several of you, Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. McKinney, were with us at the International Welcome Center opening over in North Charleston. Our leadership development is focused on PLCs. You heard Chris Haynes talk about that. Want to thank Dr. Williams for his leadership in that specifically, and our associates. Mrs. Simmons has launched a blended coaching model, which was one of the recommendations of Cognia. We're expanding that this year. I want to thank her for her leadership there. 1,200 teachers are now trained in letters due to the district's commitment. We've got a talent development program led by Mrs. LaShawna Harris, where we're trying to expand the number of GT students, particularly in underserved areas. And we're focused on, I think we heard some of our scholars talk earlier, about restorative practices and the need to build relationships with students. Again, Mrs. Allison and Dr. Coakley have done tremendous work to reduce chronic absenteeism. Do you know that Janice Malone calls every family at Sanders Clyde every morning, and that has decreased her chronic absenteeism rate by nearly five percentile points? It is significant what principals are beginning to do to get kids and keep kids in school, which is very, very challenging. Around early childhood, Kim Foxworth and her team have expanded over the course of the last year and a half, 12 child development 4K classes in 10 different schools. We've expanded early Head Start. We've started a future educator pipeline with CD classes opening at West Ashley High School. We've also expanded employee childcare, which is something that principals have told us in North Charleston has been a game changer. They want us to expand another class, but I think we have to move next year to another constituent area. So we're really excited about around that. I want to thank Mr. Barroway and Ms. Foxworth for their work to make that a reality in a very short period of time. Mr. Barroway and his team, Mr. Hamer, James Lynch, they really are first-class leaders around facilities and capital projects. As you know, you'll see various things there. I won't read them all to you. We opened Hershey-Montessori last year, completed school expansions and improvements in 10 different locations. We have various renovation and expansion projects underway now. Eight community events regarding rezoning. We were working closely with the constituent boards just last week in North Charleston at Dunston. Last week, I was able also to participate in a Powerful Vision to Learn experience over at Dunston, where nearly 200 students got a new pair of glasses. They didn't even realize they couldn't see. In the course of the last year, we've given over 2,000 students, thanks to our partners with Vision to Learn and the Carolina Panthers and their team's eyeglasses, provided immunizations, nearly 3,000. And our AED program has saved several staff members' lives. It's the first year of our Crossing Guard program, the first year of our School Security Officer program. Thanks to Mr. Reidenbach and his very talented team, we've conducted numerous school-wide security assessments, random searches, and have expanded weapon screening in many of our high schools this year. 100% of our bus routes, I think, for the first time in some time have been filled. And our nutrition services has secured over $88,000 in sub-grant funding to support nutritious meals for students. We're nearing the end, Mr. Grabowski. Very quickly. You'll see here, 19 playgrounds installed. It's the highest number ever. We celebrated that in a town hall with our operation staff a few weeks ago. 40 flooring projects, and the highest number of H-back projects ever completed. As you know, we've also expanded athletics in the Hollywood area and North Charleston specifically. You'll see a turf field recently installed here at Baptist Hill High School, as we named that field the Marion Brown Field. Mrs. Hampton and her team, for the first time, are busy reviewing with Mrs. Watley, the policy liaison, district policies, per board policy. As you know, I think at the earlier Cal this month, Mr. Kelly and you all took a look at D policies with Mr. Prentis. We've deferred those back to audit and finance, but we'll continue to look at those suites of policies and bring them to the board for review. And we're focused more so ever than before on Title IX and our compliance. And I want to thank Ms. Hampton for her work there. Finance. Daniel Prentis has been such a significant addition to the staff. He led FY '25 budget adoption, which hosted a $32 million weighted student funding formula. For the first time that I remember in nearly three decades in this district, we sat down with principals over the course of the last three weeks. And when we asked many of them, what do you need? The response was, we have everything we need. We just need to work, do our best with kids. It was really, really astounding. Chief level officer. Chief-level officers discussed that afterwards. Of course, we still had needs here and there and yonder. But principals, for the most part, said the weighted student funding formula has been a game changer for kids. And it's been a game changer for our schools. So I want to thank you for your visionary leadership there and approving that board, along with the $8,000 teacher pay increase and a hundred percent of market compensation for classified employees. So the course of the last year and month have been a very busy time in CCSD. Again, I want to publicly thank each of you for your contributions to the success of this district. The results on the South Carolina report card simply would not have been possible without your leadership and without the leadership of those sitting alongside me. Those sitting behind me and those we recognized earlier tonight. It also clearly would not have been possible without the 3,600 teachers in this district, who are committed to ensuring children are educated and educated well. So thank you for the opportunity to serve. Mr. Grabowski, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Mr. Kelly, have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. Ms. Huggins, first of all, to you and to the entire staff, the teachers, the TAs, congratulations. This is this is truly remarkable data. And I cannot under, I cannot overstate just how, how impressive it is that this work is ultimately done by the teachers in the classroom and to the students who. Who accomplished this, because at the end of the day, the students were the ones that took these tests. So it's it's truly impressive. I I do have one, one question that's slightly on the negative side, but but.
That's okay.
All of the, we went through a number of of schools tonight that that had increasing in their scores, which is to be celebrated. Were there any schools that that went the other way?
There were.
And if so, what what can the board do to support those specific schools?
There were. And in the interest of time, I stopped short of telling you the areas on which we need to focus moving forward. Because although these slides paint a great picture for the status of where we are, until all eighty-six of our schools and programs, Mr. Kelly, are excellent. We won't have done our job until all 51,280-some-odd students of ours are achieving, meet and exceeds. We won't have gained the ultimate success, which is which is ensuring every child is ready. So there are schools that declined. There's one specific feeder pattern that declined significantly from our, from from what our review has been. What we've done is we've sat down with all principals in this district at this point, the associates have. And they've worked alongside those schools that did decline. And developed with them, and I took a look at the the plan, the updated plan just this weekend, and Dr. Clamp and I exchanged about it. A plan for improving those where they declined and in looking at students, student groups and making significant improvements. Also, Mrs. Robertson, her team, before winter holiday, will sit down with every principal in this district for a one-on-one. And a simulation of the 2025 report card. Ms. Robertson and I talked about this just on Friday with Mr. Costner. We will look specifically drill down to student groups where students are scoring now to see what moves the needle most in regards to student achievement and student success. And so the answer is yes, we have opportunities for growth. Those are primarily with special needs students. We're seeing a significant increase in student behavior, specifically with special needs students. And not only academic achievement, but also behavioral needs. Number two, MLL learners. As a district, we regressed in regards to MLL students. That's why the weighted student funding formula focuses on them. But to be quite honest, the need is so significant. Mr. Brigman and I launched last week with his staff and Mrs. Simmons staff, Dr. Angela Rush, an effort to hire forty bilingual TAs. The rate of student attendance has so much and the needs are so. The the rate of student attendance has increased so much and the needs are so significant. That we have to get more folks in our buildings to be able to work with students to close the gaps. So special ed behaviors and academics, multilingual. We also, as I've shared before, have disproportionality rates. And Dr. Coakley is leading this work around student behavior and identification. And Mrs. Sherry Bell is leading this work around special ed disproportionality and identification. So we still have a long way to go. Although we're achieving at very high levels, we have a long way to go. We think collectively that we've identified the areas in which we need to improve the most. And that we're being very strategic in how we do that, school by school, leader by leader. And leaders are working teacher by teacher. And you're spot on. This, these accomplishments are to be celebrated by teachers in schools, working with kids who are doing great things. It was a long-winded answer. The answer is yes, schools declined. Yes, we know who they are. Yes, we're working with them and we've identified patterns of where we need the most support.
And and the back half of the question was, what can the board do to 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 support that? The weighted student formula looks at special needs and.
It does.
Multilingual. So do we need to change the formula for that particular feeder pattern to get them additional resources or something?
It's a great question. If, I could always say yes, 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 yes. The answer is, we need a strategy around it before we come to the board to say, we need more. Right now, we're examining the, we think we have, we think we've identified the root cause, the why of some of this. And we, we're developing the plan. Ms. Simmons, for example, is working with Dr. Rush on a standard curricula. She's working on, for MLL students, for example, she's working on a triage plan where TAs can go. So right now, just the board being knowledgeable that we have these challenges. And being ready to hear when we come with ideas and needs is is what we'd ask for right now.
And are you willing to share your, the outcome of your RCA? Are you willing to to share that?
One more time, Mr. Kelly.
You've identified the root cause, right? So your your root cause analysis. Are you willing to share with us what what your, what your outcome of your root cause analysis was?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to. Some of the things in regards specifically to MLLs is the nature of the transient population. We have students that start one place and they leave another. Number two, we've identified that some of the students that are now in some of our schools have never been in a schoolhouse. Three, families have needs that go well beyond reading and writing. Four, language is a significant barrier. Five, our folks aren't trained to help. So Mrs. Simmons, I'm just being brutally honest. Mrs. Simmons and her team and Dr. Clamp and Bill and his team and Mr. Prentice in finding funding are identifying ways. That we provide a short-term solution, which is training people. And then a long-term solution. How do we get more people here? How do we help people get advanced degrees to serve? What sorts of wraparound things are needed internally? What sort of curriculum long-term do we need? So we have a short term and we're developing a long-term plan. It's not fully developed, but we're working on it.
Outstanding, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you for the thoughtful questions.
Ms. Roberson.
Oh, thank you, because I was going to piggyback off of him. Thank you, Ms. Huggins, for that report, that detailed report. Before I get started, let me just take this opportunity to publicly congratulate Ms. Smalls, Principal Smalls. You understood the assignment. When I, when you first took the job to drive from Hollywood, from one island to another, from Hollywood to Wadmellaw. That's a lot, but you did it and you did it without hesitation. So thank you for being intentional and thank you for all the great work that I know that you will continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson, for acknowledging Ms. Smalls. We're blessed to have her. And you're right, we talked over the summer about acknowledging our assignment. And she got hers.
Got, she got it.
Yeah.
So your report was phenomenal and it was high level. So it covered everything in one swoop. Mr. Kelly asked some really thoughtful questions and thank you for being honest about where we are and where we still have to go.
Yes, ma'am.
So my only follow-up question would be. The monitoring of those schools that did not do so well.
Great question, Mrs. Roberson. That monitoring is key, as you know, from your time in schools and guidance work. If you saw a student, for example, one month and you didn't follow up in guidance with that child the next week. So many things could happen between now and then, same thing can happen in schools. So I'm very proud that Joe, Jennifer, Jackie and Sherry, our associate superintendents, along with their executive directors. I saw Mr. Comeback, I saw Ms. White, I saw Dr. Canower. I don't know of Ms. Dr. McCarthy, Ms. Mitchell's here, Mr. Gordon's here. They are committed to constant progress monitoring. They are, I don't, I don't ever see them at this building. They're in schools where I actually prefer to be too, Mrs. Roberson, as you might know. They're in schools, Joe did two CSR visits, was it two last week, Dr. Williams? Three, excuse me, sir. Dr. Williams was in schools doing three CSR visits just last week. So being in schools, being in classrooms, last week when we met, the last two or three weeks, when we met with principals. We looked at the number of classroom walkthroughs they were doing. And in the case of Shannon Cook, who who school, middle school, for the first time was excellent in every category. Her team had done 150 classroom observations and it's October. I mean, that's significant. So our associates, Dr. Clamp, Ms. Simmons and I are committed to being in schools, looking at data, working arm, elbow to elbow with principals. And that looks differently depending upon the circumstances. And you know very well, the feeder pattern where there were some regressions in in our schools. We think we've identified why and we think we've gotten some supports in place to remedy that. But this question's very thoughtful. And I don't know, Dr. Williams, Dr. Appleshimer, Dr. Ms. Haynes or Dr. Swearingen. Do you have anything you'd like to add in regards to how you monitor?
So Ms. Huggins is, Superintendent Huggins is absolutely correct in that at my level, we are looking at our CSR visits. That stands for Coaching, Supports and Results. As a matter of fact, we took Ms. Simmons and and Dr. Clamp on a brief CSR visit on today. And I'm really, what we are noticing is that, you know, while there are some things that are really, really great, glows is what we like to call them in our buildings. We also see a lot of areas of opportunity. And going back to what Ms. Huggins said just a second ago, we realized that although we may see those areas of opportunities, we have to ask ourselves, how well have we supported? Or how are we going to move forward and support these schools and making sure teachers are trained, making sure kids have everything they need? You know, once they leave our system to be successful. So that's the most important work that we're doing. And right now, we're concluding the CSR visits and in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be going into the flex classes that you heard Mr. Haynes mentioned in the video. And that's that acceleration period where we're looking at our math and our ELA and reading to see how we're accelerating learning of our scholars. And so that's our next step and going in just to see what's happening in those periods. And after that, we'll be going back again for CSR visits, because it's all about going back and monitoring the things that we we've asked them to see. Or look at and say, I have or we have the bandwidth to do this. It's not us telling them, it's a team effort where the school is actually walking through with us. And so we're going to go back in the spring and actually, you know, see what's going well and see what else we may need to tweak our progress monitor and say, hey, you know, this is going well or we may need to change some things. So.
And while you're passing the mic to Dr. Appleshimer. Dr. Appleshimer, I'm going to pose this question to you and then I'm done. On the state report card, we know that there are categories and that you can max out a category. And it's not going to change your, your number, because you've already gotten all the scores, the points that you're going to get in the graduation rate. You've already gotten all those points that you're going to get in the CCR. How are you working with schools that's maxed out in a particular group? And they need to work on getting points in an other group? A lot of people don't understand the school report card and how it works.
We are, excuse me, we are very intentional on that, Ms. Roberson, thank you for that question. Ms. Roberts sits down, as we said earlier, and she takes a look at how close they were to a certain area. How many points and how easily it would be to get those points to move them up to the next level. So she did, she started that last year. We sat down with principals and showed them, okay, here's where you are. And this is, you know, this is mid-year, this is where, what you need to get to the next level. And we look at the low-hanging fruit. Same thing as as Dr. Williams. We do our school walkthroughs. Ms. Simmons and Dr. Clamp go with us. Ms. Simmons is familiar with high schools, but she comes and she does. And we love having her. And, you know, our teachers, this is not a gotcha. It's like Dr. Williams said, there are glows and there are grows. And the instructional, LaShawna Harris and her group of instructional specialists from the district level go with us. We sit down, we debrief, we talk about what what we saw. And before we even go into the classrooms, we ask the principals, okay, what is your focus? What, what do you want us to see? And then we are, we we sit down and we are, we're intentional about talking about it and we work on it. And and we go back, we monitor. And, you know, there, there are some schools that that we know need extra help. And that's what we want to do is provide that, that extra help and that support.
Ms. Roberson, you're so right. You know, if you don't, if you don't understand the map, you don't know how to get there, right? And so Buffy's taking those meetings to a whole other level this year. And each principal will have a 90-minute time dedicated for them, their teacher coach, to actually simulate 2025 with current data that she has. And she's committed to doing that. Her work is stellar and we, we believe that, we believe that that will help principals further understand that report card process. Because you're right, once you're maxed out in a category, and I will share very transparently, I'm not here to hide anything from the board. We had no school make its MLL progress. So we know that that is an area. And next year, it's going to, the state report card will be heavily weighted in math for elementary and middle schools versus reading. And so making sure we understand that science, Dr. Temple, in grades four through six will be back on the state report card. So just making sure everyone in the system understands the system. Thank you for the thoughtful questions.
Thank you.
Ms. McKenna. Dr. Temple.
Thank you all, to everyone for all the efforts you're doing. I, I'm sure the children and their families appreciate all of it. It was impressive to see all the things going on. I look forward to us having a copy of that so we can look at it a little bit more closely. Just like one question, I, I've been very interested in the special ed and the MLL. Especially, I was really excited when we started working with the weighted student formula.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm working with the teacher leader group over at the college. And it's been interesting to hear some of their action research projects, which I've shared. And I think it would be really good for those teacher leaders to share them with appropriate staff here, because they're gaining a lot of insights. And as someone who worked in a, in a, I worked in Los Angeles. So I know what it's like to have MLL students in my classroom. And I can't imagine, I know that there is a school and a teacher where half of her students are MLs, students. That has to be the most challenging thing I can think about. So I'm wondering, you, you mentioned something about hiring 40 bilingual teacher assistants. Do we have that in the budget to do that now? Or is that something we're looking for in the next budget?
Mr. Prentice has identified funding, yes, ma'am. We have, we currently have 10 vacancies for MLL teachers, Dr. Temple, that we've not been able to fill, because the candidates simply aren't there. Mr. Brigman has has talked to others, we've talked to IHE, we've talked to Institutes of Higher Ed, we've talked to other states. We've talked to agencies recruiting out of Texas and Florida. We cannot find people to bring here. So for every vacancy we have, that will hire two right off, two TA. So that, what we have in the vacancies alone will hire over half of them. And I've identified funding in in my budget and and some others have theirs to make this a priority. Acknowledging that kids and our teachers need this, because like you said. We, we don't have, we, we've added hundreds of students since the start of the year that we didn't anticipate, who are MLL. So this is an urgent need for the district.
Well, I'd like to put in a plug for adult education, because I keep wanting to take that Spanish class, because I'm the kid who studied Latin and German. It's not doing me much good in this situation. So I, you know, I just would suggest that maybe we ought to look at adult education along the way. Maybe we would find some people who are interested in not only learning the language, but also helping in our schools.
Yes, in fact, they don't know it, but they will if they watch this. I'm meeting this week, I think, the meeting. I'm meeting this week, I think the meeting is scheduled for Friday morning or one day next week. We have several MLL teachers in the district that are like point five or point six. And they're meeting with me. If they don't, if they don't have the invite, they will soon. I think they actually have it. They're meeting with me where I'm going to beg them to consider coming on full-time. So we're, we're, we're just pulling out all the stops, trying to get folks here to help support kids. And you will get a copy of this, our apologies at one in, in Board Docs. We had to get the video uploaded. It took a little longer than, than we expected to nail it down. But I'm happy to entertain additional questions after a more thorough review by you at our next meeting and/or I'm happy to schedule one-on-ones with any of you to review any of it that you might have questions about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey.
Good evening. I have a few questions. For anybody that knows me, they know my motto is teamwork makes the dream work.
Yes, ma'am.
And this district has shown that they have, can work together to get the job done. And I applaud everyone in this room and in the district for doing what they have done to bring CCSD up higher. Now, my question is this. I know we have schools that have gone down below average. Do you have a, a total of elementary, middle, and high schools that have gone down? And what's those totals?
I can get, I can provide those to you in the board brief, Mrs. Bailey. I can show you. What we like to do when we think about continuous improvement is we like to look at the progression of performance over a three-to-five-year period. It's easy for a school to lose a point or two if they've just gotten into a category to go down. And I have to commend Mrs. Smalls, if she's still behind me. One of the first things that she said to, to, I hope she doesn't mind, I've already told this once. But Ms. Simmons shared with, with me that one of the first things Mrs. Smalls said is, we're there and I'm happy, but we're only going to celebrate for a second because we got to keep, we got to keep, keep us there. And so it's easy, as Mrs. Roberson said a little early, it's easy to, to, to move from category to category. So we like to look at school progress over a three-to-five-year period. But what I'll do is I'll provide those numbers for you, or the list of schools that were there in, in the board brief.
Okay. And my next question is the strategies for helping those schools. Are we partnering with schools with the same demographics that are going up, excelling, to partner with those schools that are failing?
We, we are. In fact, we talked about that just last week in the SDRs, Mrs. Bailey. Because, you know, there are some schools, and I'll, you saw, there were some schools on this list that were excellent. We drill down to their data. There are some schools that are excellent, like Bell Hall Elementary, that's doing an exceptional job with their pupils in poverty. Their MLLs, which is, is a small group, right? But also their special needs schools. So we talked just last week in SDRs about the benefits of even though the demographics look a little bit different, the groups still exist. That's clear from the weighted student funding formula, right? And so partnering them, doing these walkthroughs and allowing these collaborative conversations is key. So our associates are, they really lead that work in their monthly meetings with principals.
Okay. And my last question is, what can the community as a whole do to help? It's like, I know you need ML assistant teachers. Have you reached out to like churches, businesses, and community leaders to help fill those positions?
So just last week, Ms. Bailey, this is where that engagement with stakeholders has been so beneficial. So in our interfaith roundtable just last week, we talked about just that faith-based leaders helping connect us. And there's a pastor right off the Dorchester Road that was part of that last week who said, I've got folks in my church who could probably help you. So we're doing all that we can. The community can, if they, if they are bilingual specifically or know someone bilingual, they can connect with us. They help provide supports. If they can offer wraparound supports and volunteer in our schools, we need that. We need the partnerships and the connections to be able to build effective support systems to help kids. So anything the community can do to connect us to resources would be wonderful.
And also the minute, the ment, my last question, the, looking towards the community to help with mentorship for the behavioral problems that we have in some schools.
Yes, ma'am. I know there are several successful programs everywhere in the, everywhere in the district of, of folks that come in and, and help provide wraparound and mentoring support to students. And so we're certainly open to that. We leave that up to the discretion of building-level principals. They know their buildings best, they know their students best. But if there are community members that think they can offer support volunteering, we'd ask them to connect with their local community schools and their principals to see what support they might be able to offer. Thank you for your great questions, Ms. Bailey.
And there was one more. I got to go to North Charleston High School with Mr. Darby. And he showed me the recovery pods, the MLL pods, and the station rotations. And that is an excellent model for our high schools, especially with the MLL learners that come in and they don't know any English.
Yes, yes, ma'am. He is using some of the waivers that he has through the School of Innovation that you all signed off on to help provide different ways to support kids. And that's one such way. And he attributes some of the ability to rise from unsatisfactory to below-average baby steps, right? And turn around a high-poverty school to the flexibility that, that he's been given through the School of Innovation waiver and those rotations that you just referenced.
Okay, I just wanted to say the best.
That's fine.
The best is yet to come for CCSD.
We believe so too, Ms. Bailey. Thank you.
Ms. Watley.
I just have a few questions. How long before we will know the impact of the letters program?
So I'm, so we're, we believe that we're already seeing, and I'll, I'll let Ms. Simmons. I, I'll let Ms. Simmons add anything that she might want to add or say that my answer's wrong. But I believe we're beginning to see that already, Mrs. Watley, with the significant growth in achievement and readiness, particularly at the elementary grades level. Many districts across the state, and now the state has adopted letters as a pathway for success with kids. So we believe we're beginning to see that. It's the feedback we've gotten from teachers, Mrs. Simmons.
I have to agree, Superintendent Huggins. We've seen a ten percentage point increase in the last two, two years in literacy. So I think that speaks to the level of development that we've provided for our teachers. And I will share that Susan Rawlings and LaShawna Rivers with the Teaching and Learning Department, they have found a high school solution that's similar to letters as well. Our middle and high school teachers were asking for the same type of training that letters provides for elementary grades. And so we feel like that's going to take us even, even further in terms of our growth and development with literacy and particularly literacy and reading achievement on SC Ready.
Great question, Ms. Watley. So as far as District Seven goes in West Ashley, I have all of the feeder schools except for one, and that's CE South. So how many of the District Seven schools have, have had a status change this year?
All of the schools in District Seven, it would probably be better for me to give that to you in the board brief. They either maintained their rating or achieved a higher rating, I believe. But let me give that to you.
I know I have at least one that's gone from below or failing to satisfactory.
So, so many, many of them either maintained their good or excellent average, or, or they grew one level. West Ashley High School, which I know kind of goes between you and Mr. Calhoun, is good for the first time in, in decades. And so we're beginning to see the strength of that feeder pattern, albeit a very diverse, maybe the most diverse feeder pattern in, in the district.
I, I do believe that West Ashley is probably the melting pot.
It really is. Because remember, West Ashley is that school that's right under Title I that doesn't get, you know, that gets the WSF to help support its students. So many of its elementary schools are Title I, but it was right under the threshold.
So, well, if you didn't know that answer, you might not know this one. How many in, in D seven are still below?
So let me, let me, I can tell you what, I can break down the information for you all in this week's board brief that way, that way. You can see it by your feeder pattern and you know. But again, I believe, I don't, I don't, I, I think all of the ones are average.
Okay, awesome.
Average and above. And I'm looking at Dr. Swearingen.
Yep.
And high.
And then my, my final question is just going to be, how can we keep supporting them and, and give them more support? Because what I would like, because I was looking at those slides with Mount Pleasant and all of that, I would like to see West Ashley up on that screen.
Well, you, you, you're going to, because there's some very thoughtful leaders across this district and particularly in District Seven. One thing that District Seven struggles with, just like every other, Dr. Coakley will know, is chronic absenteeism. That's a, that's a significant problem. Megan Williams at Springfield, for example, says that she, every time I see her, she's, she's, I called her the other day and said, hey, do you know Janice calls every family every morning? And she said, do you think I can get by with that? And I said, well, I don't know. But, but they're, they're struggling with student attendance over there more. But, but again, some very thoughtful leaders, and you have some on that excellent list already. So.
Is, is there a way that we, is there some sort of initiative or a way that maybe we could do in the community to inspire kids to make them want to?
Believe me, Dr. Coakley.
Get interested.
Let, let's, if we pass the mic over to Dr. Coakley real quickly, she can tell you. As a result of her efforts, the district has seen a decline in chronic absenteeism and truancy this year already. We'll let her give you a brief overview of what she's doing.
An area where we can, we can lean some, some support.
We've launched a district-wide campaign around this thing, thanks to Dr. Coakley.
Thank you so much for the question. So chronic absenteeism, absenteeism, as we know, is nationwide issue, right? But in Charleston County, we're not using that for an excuse for what do we need to do with families. Over the last two years, really talking with families on what's happening, I'm going to be very honest with you about what we're seeing. We're seeing families who are taking trips during the school year when students should be in school. We're seeing families who might be dealing with some cultural stuff where they have to go across seas to work with rehabilitation of family members, especially with a lot of the wars that have been going on. We've had some schools reach out to ask, what can we do? We don't want to lose this child, but the family does have to leave. In those cases, we have had to become creative about what do we do and support. And just this week, weekend, we found families that actually hadn't even started attending school this year for various reasons. We have reached out to solicitor Scarlett Wilson, thanks to Superintendent Huggins, where we were able to meet with Scarlett Wilson and her team around how do we get additional supports for schools that are following that truancy intervention plan, which is a mandate by the State Department? And we still have families that are not adhering to that plan. What do we do to get the supports? Because we're seeing that more so in our elementary levels. But for our middle school and high school students, we have reached out and actually partnered with DJJ for students that they have also identified to be on a court order to attend school because that's been an issue. Anytime we have the crime in the neighborhood or a student has been reported by the parent for unencouragable behaviors, they're typically assigned order to attend. And those are our scholars that we see missing most of the days. But we've got to make sure, like what you said, Ms. Watley, how do we encourage, not necessarily the students, but for the families who are taking trips, taking time off, those early release days, half-days? How do we encourage them to actually attend school? And I will say for our elementary schools, they have become creative. Their awards day, their school celebrations, anything that they're willing to do to support students are typically tied around holidays or when we know that students are going to be hired. I am anxiously waiting for the first nine-week data to come from the State Department on chronic absenteeism. We will identify which schools need support. And then it would be boosted ground action going out to those schools to help develop plans around students who are actually impacting their report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley.
That's all from me.
Thank you, Ms. Watley, for your questions.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief. First, shout out to Ms. Smalls. I see you out there. Came from Stono also, but yeah, shout out to Ms. Smalls. But then also, Dr. Temple, don't hate on German, es Deutsch. And so we all speak German out here. Everybody should speak German. But lastly, and this don't have to be answered right now, but this could come inside of the board brief, Ms. Roberts. So how close were the next schools, be it high school and middle schools, from being inside the top ten? So say if we have academic magnet and SOA inside of the top ten, but then the next ones are like forty, fifty, that's a huge disparity right there. We need to be looking at that right there. Don't need that answer right now. Secondly, for Mr. Barrowey, with the CD classes moving away from West Ashley High School, what are we going to do with the students who are inside of, inside of the CD program at West Ashley High School right now? Will they get like the first chance to go inside of the head start inside of West Ashley? Or will they be able to get the first chance to go inside of some type of placement somewhere else since they are already inside the CD classes over there?
Mr. Cohen, I apologize. I probably misspoke in my presentation. We're not moving, we're expanding.
You're expanding.
Yes, sir. I'm sure that's my, I'm, I'm confident I said something that was wrong. So I, I apologize for my error. We, we expand and we not, we not, we not closing. No, sir.
Because you said a couple of months ago that, you know, we have to look at what we're doing at West Ashley High School because they don't have the facilities technically for the CD program over there for the, so what are we going to do with that?
So what we've identified, just point out, and a challenge is that having, you're talking about the early, the early childhood, daycare, that sort of thing, it's extremely hard in middle and high schools because we don't have the capability with other little kids in the building. You know, whether it be the facility itself, rooms without bathrooms, I mean, that's one great example. Playgrounds is another great example. So putting that, those daycare centers at elementary schools is ideal to minimize the, the impact on the district. So that's why I'm not, I'm not pursuing that opportunity at other high schools or middle schools at this point, including expanding West Ashley.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Thanks for the grace. I appreciate it.
Ms. Huggins, I am incredibly proud of you, your staff, your teachers.
It's a great team.
Students, their parents. I mean, it, it just shows our continued improvement in literacy and math. However, the persistent performance gap amongst students of different ethnic backgrounds, I mean, it's still there. And it's been there for thirty years, ever since I've been involved in education. So, you know, I see Principal Smalls did it. Hey, you showed examples in the spotlight. Sucker, they're doing it. North Charleston, they're doing it. So I, I think this is, it's just signs over these last two years that it can be done. And this upsets me so much because when we start to talk to ESSER during audit and finance, the fact that we just spent so much money, you know, thirty-six million dollars. And I, I challenged the press because the press doesn't even write about it. They scream about transparency and accountability to ensure that our investments are genuinely benefiting our students. Yet, you know, thirty-six million dollars was spent, and I'm still waiting to hear, was there any success here? I know your staff can do, but, you know, we're going to really have to look at this outside stuff because I don't see it. I see your staff doing it. This last two years proves it. So I, I had my hands off to you, Ms. Simmons. Really, I think you guys have done it. But don't get me started on ESSER. And, you know, our communities have to start stepping up. Our parents have to start stepping up. And Smalls said it, stakeholders are there. She got the stakeholders involved. And I'm deeply impressed with that. But you showed, it shows that it can be done.
It, it, it does. And Mrs. Smalls, we used her as an example with principals last week because her focus has remained on kids. She, there are, there are different needs at Firestone, but her focus was on expanding academic opportunity for kids. So that's what it's going to take, a system where everyone, starting at the board level, everybody's focused on kids and everybody's making decisions that are kids. And I thank you all for, for attempting to, to travel that path and the staff alongside me and those who work so hard in our schools. And it's going to take a hundred percent of people doing that to, to make the gains that kids deserve. So thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity.
Great questions, great debate. Moving on to Audit and Finance Committee. Item, item five A, the question before the board is a motion to approve the 2024-25 CCSD Head Start, Early Start Budget Amendment in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I have a.
So moved.
Second. I will open up the board for discussion. Mr. Cohen.
To discuss, we went through it thoroughly at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting.
Ms. Watley.
No, nothing.
Ms. Bailey? Dr. Temple? Ms. McKenny? Ms. Roberson?
Yep.
Mr. Kelly?
I have nothing, I closed the, the motion for debate and asked that it be brought up for vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. Onto item five B, the question before the board is a motion to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the tax anticipation note to meet cash flow requirements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Open up the motion for debate is Mr. Cohen.
I'll just look forward to this being one of the last ones that we do.
Any questions by any of the fellow board members? Hearing none, I will close the table, I motion for, for debate and ask for a vote. And the motion passes, onto item five C, the question before the board is a motion to advance to the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting for consideration to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
I move, but I will change the wording of that for.
Yes.
Us to actually approve the reallocation of funds, uh, this is poured from the Cowen meeting.
Second?
Second.
I'll open the board for any discussion, any discussion? Mr. Cohen?
It's a motion to approve the reallocation of the funds as shown in that attached resolution.
Right.
Yes.
Ms. Trudy, did you get that?
So hearing no debate, we bring that motion up for vote. Please bring it up for vote.
Hi, Dave.
Ms. Roberson.
And the motion passes. Onto item five D. Question before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Opening the floor for debate, is there any debate on the issue? Hearing none, I will close the floor for debate and ask that the motion be brought up for vote. And the motion passes. Onto item five E, the question before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown by the attached resolution. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any debate, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I will close the floor for debate and ask that the motion be brought up for vote. And the motion passes. Item to item five F.
Contracts. Yes.
Well.
Well, it's technically F right now, right, so it's technically F, contracts created at two fifty.
So this is an information item, contracts greater than two hundred and fifty thousand as of September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Prentis?
I don't have anything additional to add, we shared this list with the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, of particular note, there were new, no new competitive procurement detail for the month, uh, everything's on the second page in terms of other procurement methods, uh, such as state contracts, sole source, and contracts that were already negotiated.
Thank you. Onto item five G, which the question before the board is a motion to adopt the resolution which calls for the
SRF day.
Execution of the IGA, which
SRF day.
Conditions CCSD participation in the Union Peer TIP.
We moved that to the end of, that was my resolution, then move it to the end of Audit and Finance Committee.
Are we at the end?
We still got, SRF day, Michael, fine.
Apologize, I apologize, my apology, my scream. Sorry.
Onto item five G, which is the ESSER funds update. Mr. Prentis?
Yes, sir, um, so this is the ESSER report as of August thirty-first, of course, at this point in time, ESSER is um, we're anticipating making our final claim in the month of November, uh, to complete the full reimbursement of all ESSER funds that were appropriated for CCSD. But as of this report, we received a hundred and fifty-eight point three million of the total hundred and sixty-three point two million that had been received, um, so we're well on our way to closing that out.
Any questions of Mr. Prentis regarding the S report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Prentis, one, one quick, you said, I, you say last sentence again, I think you misspoke, I wanna understand what you said.
Uh, that we'd received a hundred and fifty-eight, sorry, let me pull the number back up. Hundred and fifty-eight point three million of the total hundred and sixty-three point two million. Um, so the hundred and sixty-three point two million is the total allocation, we've received a hundred and fifty-eight point three back in reimbursement so far.
Allocation, yeah, okay, thank you.
When our final claim in November hits, we'll have received everything.
The delta, got it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prentis? Ms. Prentis, in, in reviewing the report, I just have a, an understanding that this is, we're at the total end. What is the final date? Cause it looks like we still have two million dollars that's unencumbered.
So that, that report as of August thirty-first still had some encumbrances, September thirtieth was the last day. So when you start to see the September and the October reports, you'll see those encumbrances wipe out, and then the reimbursements will come to a close in November.
So we are fully confident that every penny has been encumbered.
Yes, sir.
The next item is, you know, I keep looking at the report, and I, it'll be something that obviously will be brought up at the end, at the next Audit and Finance meeting, um, at least, I'm still in the committee. I'm really concerned, when I look at these numbers, that the fourteen million spent on summer learning. Curious, now that I've seen what we've done in the last two years back in the schools. The same thing with thirty-one spent to address unique needs of students. Love to hear what insights we gain from those programs. And a full report and spending related to thirty-one, including vendor reports on the activities and the achievements of that thirty-one million dollars that was spent during ESSER. I would really like to see, if we're gonna close out this account, let's close it out properly with accountability and transparency. And that means that all these people who receive this phenomenal amount of money should be telling us exactly what they did. But seeing as this is only information, I'll wait until we get to it and get our final report.
Yes, sir.
Hearing no further questions, we will move on to item five H, which is the financial reports, August twenty-fourth, uh, August two, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Prentis?
Yes, sir, so this report being the second month of the fiscal year, um, not a lot of detail here to share. What I did highlight was the WSF report, which is now available. And as you received in the board brief last week, the public transparency dashboard is now on the website. Um, so if you go to the homepage and go to Financial Services to Transparency, and then under the Transparency page, there's Public Dashboards. Uh, that page has a dashboard where you can click through all of the allocations and expenditures on an updated monthly basis through WSF. And that'll be the page where we put any other financial transparency dashboards as they're developed.
Any further questions of Mr. Prentis? Hearing none, we will move on to item five J, which is the Capital Projects Report, August twenty twenty-four. Mr. Prentis?
Yes, sir, no, no significant information to share here. Of course, this includes all the open capital programs for the sales tax, the FCO from FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Um, and we have changed that format, of course, as of July, so this is the second iteration of that new monthly report. And happy to, to take any feedback as we continue to refine that over time.
Any questions, Mr. Prentis? Hearing none, we will move on to item five J, which is a motion to adopt the resolution which calls for the execution of the IGA, which conditions CCSD participation in the Union Peer TIP. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I will open up the floor for discussion. Ms. Roberson?
Okay, I will start with some basic questions. So we are, we are voting on the IGA? The IGA in conjunction with the TIP?
Yes, ma'am, so the IGA um conditions CCSD's participation in the Union Peer TIP to include those negotiated items, which would typically not be included in just a simple approval.
Okay, and so our forty-five days start at September eleventh with the letter dated to the superintendent?
So that's correct, the, the law requires that at least forty-five days is given, so by sending that letter on September eleventh and stating that their public hearing was November fourth, they met the requirement of the law. Um, so CCSD's action has to occur before uh November fourth in order to receive consideration for the IGA. Otherwise, it would just be, you know, simple opt-in, opt-out.
Okay, so my questions are still around educational benefits. Um, so I just have three or four. How the, the current, okay, this is not Audit and Finance, so now we are allowed to talk about the IGA as it is?
Everything is out in public, it's all posted in public content on Board Doc, yes, ma'am.
So, how does the proposed consolidation of the staff at Seventy-Five Calhoun meet the requirements? All of my questions, let me preface this, is relating to policy DE, um, which requires the district to examine and ensure that any participation in TIP provides both short and long-term benefits with meaningful educational impact for teachers and, and students. So my questions are gonna be based around educational benefits. So I go back to that. Because our policy states that participating in a TIP should have some educational benefits, can you clarify how, what's negotiated, what's written in the, the current IGA? The um acquisition of Seventy-Five Calhoun, how does that relate to um educational outcomes?
So just to be specific on the policy, if you're referencing the additional considerations, it says that the considerations may include, but are not limited to. So in this particular circumstance, the ability to get the top floor of Seventy-Five Calhoun Street um, would A, allow us to terminate the remaining sixty years on the lease with the city of Charleston and realize that benefit um to CCSD's operations. Um, it allows staff from Bridgeview to move uh from the two-story building into Calhoun Street and the collapsing of all the trailers that are at Bridgeview, which has, as we've discussed, the financial benefit in terms of cash flow savings that goes back into the GOF. Um, and then, of course, the um operating savings associated with not having to pay freight for the city of Charleston's occupancy in this building. Um, again, there's not a direct educational benefit from the IGA in terms of Seventy-Five Calhoun, like there's not a, a benefit to a school financially. Um, but of course, the ability to free up revenues and to consolidate district operations with this proposal prevents us from having to construct other office space down the road. We had looked years ago, I guess, at a proposal to consolidate district operations in another location. Um, and that would have required the expenditure of sales tax dollars to do so. And so in particular with this, we would no longer have uh to expend sales tax dollars on operational space enhancements, and those dollars can be allocated directly to schools.
So you're saying that our current policy is, the word is, may include educational benefits? So it doesn't, so we should have, when we were um, amending our policy DE, we should have actually outlined um, educational benefits that would it could have looked like in our IGA?
You could have, um, I, I think that's somewhat subjective in that sense that, you know, the school district has many different facets to its operations, and so the policy doesn't specifically require um educational benefits, it requires some financial benefit significant in nature to CCSD.
But we certainly, we certainly do believe that this, Mrs. Roberson, would allow us to um utilize other funding that we would perhaps use in different ways to maintain um what we have at Bridgeview to potentially support kids. Um, I believe that's, I think that's your primary question, is that right?
It is.
Yes, and we, we believe through, through this, that we will be able to utilize funding that we might um otherwise use in, in maintenance and upkeep to, to support schools in some way. We, we, we can't give, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be disingenuous in attempt to go through those things right now, because we, we don't know, but we certainly think it would allow us some flexibility in order to support schools and kids directly, if that makes sense.
It does, it does, I'm just wondering if that's something that should be outlined um in the policy and not use the word may. Right.
I think for thought, for sure.
Okay, um, and so my next question is, when we look at the previous TIPS, we um participated fully.
Ms. Roberson, I, I will extend your time to answer the question.
Mr. Gerasim, may I make a, a, a motion of privilege?
Yes.
Uh, uh, I move that we extend the time of debate for this particular topic by baby double uh for all members, because the importance of the. Would, would you mind?
I agree, I, Ms. Roberson, I agree. So if, if you could set in future, set the time clock to four minutes.
You had to, you had to.
Okay, so in previous TIPS, we participated fully, correct? Because there was no IGA.
Correct.
Now we have an opportunity to um write our IGA that's gonna benefit us. But yet, in this IGA that we are writing for the first time, it's still a full participation. Whereas our policy states that we can um participate in full or in part. So why would we not participate in part if we've been always participating in full?
So I, I'll, I'll draw a line of differentiation between that, uh, we haven't always participated in full. There are some, particularly Laurel Island, where we're participating at less than the full thirty years. Um, but of course, there was no, no IGA to your point, so the IGA isn't required to determine necessarily the term of the participation. Um, we can make that decision based on the law, the IGA allows the other financial benefits to be considered. Um, in this particular case, the city's willingness to agree to the IGA was tied to the thirty years. And so that is referenced in the IGA as a specific term. Um, but to your point, the term of participation um is not normally part and parcel of the IGA. That's been determined by the board through prior approvals based on the analysis that was performed. But in this particular case, the IGA is only acceptable as a package um with the thirty-year term. So that's, that's referenced in that document as piece, a piece of the requirement.
So why would we not, because for me, there are so many unknowns um in um the use of um assumptions in, in the report that is given to us. Why would we, a recommendation not, or um a sentence be put into the IGA to say that we would want to, we could, we would participate for maybe fifteen years with an option to renew, or maybe, let me back it up, ten years with an option to renew, and that would give us an opportunity to see if it's actually working, and then we could go back in to renew. But if we say thirty years, we are in it for thirty years. So I'm just wondering why that was not, uh, uh, if it was discussed, um, it didn't come to us. Because I would, I think we, me, would feel more comfortable if we did a ten-year, a fifteen-year with an option to renew if the project and the development is going the way it should be.
So the, the option to renew isn't allowed under the law? So the, the option to renew isn't allowed under the law. The term has to be determined with part of the approval. So once that term is determined upfront, you know, it can be extended at some point down the road. But there's not like an option to renew type situation that we can, can be contractually entered into. But again, the, the city's conditioning of the IGA was that it was acceptable with the 30-year term. So if we were saying, you know, the board's going to approve participation at 15 years, then the IGA would come off the table and we'd just be foregoing all the revenue for 15 years with no IGA. It wouldn't be approved in that form. And as part of the analysis that we did as well, considering the probability of development of Union Pier without CCSD's participation, you know, as referred stated from the city and other entities, that, you know, that's likely not to occur in the sense that, you know, therefore it wouldn't move forward at all and we'd continue to see zero value at Union Pier as a result from the state-owned property. We looked at what it would take out there for the development to, you know, bring about the same benefit of the IGA that's proposed. And what that is, is essentially $900 million in private development on Union Pier would have to occur if we didn't participate in the TIF to bring us the same benefit as participating in the TIF with the value of 75 Calhoun Street and the other things that have been negotiated in as part of it. To, to your particular question, instead of looking at it as a, as a, you know, 10-year term versus a 30-year term, what we've included is language that states that they're capped at the amount of bonds that they can issue. So they can only ever issue a maximum of $400 million in bonds. That was somewhat subjective without the IGA. And that's what's happened in the past with prior TIFs is they, they have more capacity, they issued more bonds. In this particular circumstance, it's capped at 400 million. So if the TIF performs greater than it's anticipated, then all those extra revenues would come back to CCSD early. And so that's a little bit different from past circumstances because when those extra revenues have come in and other TIFs, that becomes pay-as-you-go funding for the city to use for other projects that were authorized in the redevelopment plan. And in this circumstance, we would get those dollars back.
Okay. And then my final question on my last 32 seconds. Our board policy requires a sensitivity analysis. Has that been done?
Yes, ma'am. So we looked at several different scenarios. We looked at the full development scenario, which is the $2 billion in private development with full participation of CCSD. We looked at the break even that I just mentioned with the $900 million of development. And then we looked at a scenario that was a zero development where nothing happens and no participation happens. And then we looked at a scenario that was no participation and full development happens. And then assigned some probabilities to that based on the requirement for public infrastructure development that has to happen out there in order for the development to actually work.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly.
For a second.
Mr. Prentice, I, I wonder if you would take some time to discuss some of the comments brought up during public comments tonight. It was stated that, that the discount rate used in our model was incorrect. Can you speak to that, please?
Sure. And I actually have our financial advisor here. I'd like for him to speak to that. If he can get the wireless mic and hand it to him, Mr. Cheatwood with First Tryon. Because as I mentioned, we did consider that kind of probability consideration in the different scenarios, but I'd like for him to speak to the discount rate.
Great. Thanks, Daniel. We used a discount rate of 4%. That's a common rate we use because it's a very, it's a common borrowing rate, tax-exempt borrowing rate for the school district as well as the city of Charleston. And so that 4% is what we used on that. And we use that in a lot of our other analysis. Similar analysis for other entities across the state, but it's a tax-exempt borrowing rate that the school district or the city of Charleston could realize.
And what, if the margin of error on that discount rate was even half a percent or something minor, would that change your recommendation of approval versus not?
It would not change the recommendation. It would just change the present value analysis figures that are shown in the, in the board materials there. The higher the discount rate, the lower the present value and vice versa. Lower the discount rate, higher the present value. So it would just change the numbers with the break even scenario we, that Daniel talked through, that 900 million. It would likely change that number if we looked at, because we focused on the present value amount through 2092 to get to that break even number. So if we used a higher discount rate, therefore lower present value, it would require more development to get there.
Of course.
And we also showed that kind of side card of that, the gross value, so that you could look at the full collection amount and the value of 75 Calhoun and everything rolled in as well.
Okay. Would you also speak to the cost? It was mentioned this evening as well that the, the evaluation on the fourth floor is not proper? Would you mind speaking to that?
Sure. Um, yeah, I can start. You can add to it. We looked at two components to the value of the top floor of this building. The first was more easily quantifiable. That was the operational benefit you would get from moving the employees at Bridgeview to the top floor of this building. And so that roughly 260,000 per year was the prorata share of the employees that are in the mobile units at Bridgeview that you would move here. And so we assumed that would be in place. That would be real money realized to the school district, operational savings there. We grew that by 3% per year. So that's what totaled that amount. The other component was admittedly harder to quantify. It was, you know, when the, the, the city exits its lease and you now take that on, there is some benefit there, even though if you occupy the building, you may not be able to realize a benefit from, say, going out and releasing it or selling it to someone. That's a benefit. You now own that top floor without a, a rent-free tenant in there for the next 60 years. And so we, we talked through, including with your Audit and Finance Committee members, a few of them, a number of ways to evaluate that benefit. We settled on really a replacement cost. If you were to go out and build 30,000 square feet at an approximate construction cost of $500 per square foot, that would cost you $15 million to go build that space. And so that's the other component of the value of that top floor was at $15 million, which again, admittedly, that's not cash in your pocket when you take over the lease on July 1st of '25, but, but there is value in having that. So those were the two components that made up the.
That, that's assuming then that we were going to spend $15 million to build administrative buildings, which this board has not approved.
That's right. But again, you've even, you've got some value. If you go to sell the top floor, again, lease the top floor, there's, there's a benefit there that you don't have a tenant that's in place for the next 60 years not paying any rent. So we wanted to quantify that in some form or fashion.
So kind of two, two pieces to it. There was the, you know, the true kind of real estate value. And then there was also the, what we're currently paying to the benefit of another public entity. And so if you look at what we're currently paying in electric, gas, custodial, and all those other services that are of no benefit to CCSD and amortize that economic value now coming back to CCSD over the term, that was the other piece that was considered. So it was just kind of two ways of looking at it. And the, the piece with, the second piece that I just mentioned with the amortization of the 30 years and the savings, we looked at the operational cost component of it. And we also looked at kind of what the leasehold value of it was as well. And so Mr. Cheatwood's firm brought in a Charleston-based real estate advisor and looked at that component, you know, in terms of what it's worth on the commercial market from a leasehold standpoint, both in base rent and in O and M. And then also what it's worth from a, you know, capital standpoint, if you were to just sell it wholesale.
Right. Okay. So. But if we occupy that space, we still have to turn the lights on and heat it and clean it. So those costs are still, they're not going away.
You're right. They're not going away.
So then why are we adding that to the plus column?
So we're, we're currently spending all that money as it stands now in the 75 Calhoun operating budget in the GOF, but it's to the benefit of the city of Charleston. And so I think the quantifying that is probably $450,000 a year that we're spending in GOF funds that go to serve a non-CCSD entity based on the way the lease was written. So by terminating that lease, we no longer have to spend that money for the benefit of another agency. We can spend it for our own benefit and move people in that, you know, are currently sitting at another location to receive that benefit.
Okay. And then does the, the additional capital that we have sitting above us, does that help us with our reserve fund requirements?
So.
As a hard asset?
It, it will change the way this asset looks financially. Because right now, the lease through 2092, if we were to sell this building, it's, I'm not going to use the word impaired, but we would have to sell it at a discount and give the city a first right of refusal to buy it essentially at a significantly lesser than market value. And so by eliminating the lease and having full control of the building, we also then become, you know, the owner and able to sell it, you know, on the, the commercial market at whatever the prevailing market rate is without any discount. And of course, you know, if we went to sell this building and offered it for sale with first right of refusal to the city at a significantly discounted rate, they would almost be foolish not to purchase it for that.
Yeah. So the question was, though, in regard to, is this going to tie back into our GOF, right? Because we, we have to have a certain percentage in our reserve fund, fun, not, not the fund balance, but the reserve fund. And so, so does adding the hard asset of the fourth floor help that number or increase that number so that we can put additional monies into the GOF and not? What, what, and I know that we're on a, on a burn down of that fund, but, but once we've leveled out in, I think it's six years, eight years, something like that.
So it will from a fixed asset standpoint on the balance sheet, but not from a, a cash standpoint in terms of our fund balance. So it, it'll be worth more on our balance sheet as an asset, but it wouldn't contribute to the, the fund balance number from a cash on hand standpoint.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. The last or the, the last two are somewhat tied. I, in your previous responses to Mrs. Roberson, you, you said that the 30-year component was tied to, the Charleston tied that to the IGA.
Yes.
Can you tell me why? Another way of asking that question is, why does Charleston City want to do this?
So that was, you know, again, if the IGA is going to be on the table, that was their ask is, you know, if we're going to give you 75 Calhoun and these other considerations in an IGA, we're asking for the 30 years. Otherwise, the IGA is off the table. And the, the most significant consideration of that is if you look at the model for the, the tax increment growth overturn, over time, you know, the first 15 years, that number is much smaller. And then really between, you know, the early 2030s until 2044 is when full buildout happens. And so from 2044 to 2062 is when more of the revenue was collected. So if you were to cut that time back, their bonding capacity wouldn't only decrease by half. It would decrease by, you know, the prorata share of the revenue to be received over that period of time. So that, you know, given that CCSD's portion of the increment is right around 50% of the total, if we were to cut, you know, our participation back by 15 years, their ability to actually issue bonds and make meaningful public improvements would, would be diminished significantly to the detriment of the ability of the project to move forward.
By around half.
Yep.
And the other, the, the, the other component that was brought up this evening was some form of like a refund or, or, or a TIF in rears. Was any idea like that ever explored with the city?
A TIF in a rears?
Meaning rather than signing on today, we sign on 15 years from now or, or leave the door open to do so for a 15-year period? Was anything like that explored?
I, I know the question you're referencing, but that wouldn't be allowed under the law. So that essentially that decision has to be made upfront before the public hearing. And if we didn't condition the participation with the IGA, we could either opt-in, opt-out, you know, or participate at a lesser term. But we have to decide that before the public hearing. You can't go and do, you know, some changes down the road from that standpoint.
Understood. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Geraske.
Ms. Waters, are you on the line?
I am.
The floor is yours.
Thank you.
You have four minutes if you're not watching.
Okay. No, I, I heard that part. Thank you for letting me make some comments and I apologize that I can't be there for my last meeting. And I would say I've enjoyed working with many of you and I'm going to miss some of you for sure. But in terms of my questions, one, I appreciate the questions that have been asked already. But I have two, and I guess before, before I ask what I'm really wanting to get at, why is participating in this TIF important to CCSD? Aside from the IGA, I heard all of the numbers and what we're going to get in terms of the agreement with the city to take over that floor at 75 Calhoun. But why would we want to participate in the TIF in the first place if the IGA was never a thing?
Mr. Prentice, may I, Mrs. Waters, if, if I may for, for just a moment, we want you to know that we're grateful for your service too. We're hopeful we will see you on the 12th where we were going to acknowledge your service in six years on the board. The newly elected board members or re-elected members won't be able to be sworn in until five days post-certification of election results. And so this current board will sit for the November 12th cowl. So we hope that we'll be able to see you and acknowledge your service at that time. So thank you.
Oh, absolutely. I think when we were talking about it before, we thought they were going to be certified sooner. But if, if I'm in the game, I'll be there on November 12th.
They'll, they'll definitely be certified by the 8th, but the law states that, that you can't be sworn in for five days.
I got you.
We had to change the, we had hoped to, to swear in before then, but not, but we're not able to. So anyway, I'm sorry, Mr. Prentice. I did not mean to interrupt.
And thank you, Ms. Waters. That, that question is very important. The consideration of the TIF without the IGA, the recommendation would be not to participate. You know, this comes down to somewhat of an analysis of probability and the likelihood of the TIF moving forward without CCSD's participation as a consideration. And of course, without a TIF, the current revenue collected on that property from the, the state port's own land is zero. And if it remained at zero, then, you know, the status quo stays in place. So the ability to get 75 Calhoun and some of these other benefits as a result of the IGA, which in theory would then allow the TIF to move forward, does bring about some benefit to CCSD after the TIF is completed. And we've shown that revenue in the analysis, you know, in the 30 years that follow aligned with the years of the lease that would be in existence from 2062 to 2092, if there weren't to be, you know, an IGA. And so, you know, it, it's part of that consideration that, you know, the IGA has value and allows us to get something of value upfront, while it'll take a number of years for the TIF to actually generate that increment that we've shown in the analysis. And then the district would get the benefit of that revenue after the TIF concludes. And the likelihood of any of that happening without a TIF, it was negligible based on the circumstances in this particular development.
Sure. And I guess my question really centers around my, my thoughts that we're, we're not in the business of developing properties. And so what you just shared, I mean, it makes sense in terms of improving that, that property, certainly. But I'm just, but given what Ms. Dunmire Roberson actually was able to back into, which is that there's really not a direct educational benefit. Certainly, there's going to be some dollars. And I do have a question around how much revenue will be saved and, and transitioned into GOF. But given that there's not a direct educational benefit and we're not actually in the business of property development, I'm just trying to figure out why we would take it, take this as something we should be doing as a school district. Because we'll have two cycles of children go through this system before there are any benefits realized there. So there really is only the IGA. But I'm, I'm just, I just, I guess I keep wondering how we get here to this point where we consider these TIFs to, to be so essential, because we've really talked about it, like it's essential that we participate. And I just, I just can't quite wrap my mind around that view yet. So I'm just looking for that.
And I think that each individual TIF would be unique in consideration. I mean, for example, I've referenced before the Mount Pleasant TIF, the Town Center TIF, as it was called, that was enacted back in 1998 and expired in 2017. It was non-contiguous. So it had property that spanned from Mount Pleasant Town Center down Coleman Boulevard to Memorial Waterfront Park. And that TIF was enacted before school districts were authorized to consider their level of participation under the law. That changed in 1999. And so that TIF was created without the consent of CCSD and before the law changed to allow the negotiation of an IGA. But as an example, if that TIF was being proposed in modern day, one of the parcels that was included in that district was Mulberry Middle School. And so, you know, had CCSD had a need to build a new middle school campus at that location as it did during the time that that TIF was active, I would have certainly considered asking the town of Mount Pleasant to give us, you know, a significant portion of the capital required to build that school because they could issue TIF bonds and give that money to CCSD to build the school. So it really comes down to what the need is within the area where the TIF is because the law is specific that the improvements have to happen within the geographic boundaries of the TIF. And so in this particular case, as we didn't, you know, need any capital expansion necessarily in the D20 area or particular to what's going on at Union Pier, we started to think about different opportunities that could be of value to CCSD beyond the boundaries of the Union Pier TIF and looked at things that the city of Charleston could do within the, you know, different partnership agreements that we had entered into with them. But I think every TIF that we receive a request for under the law will receive different consideration based on CCSD's policy if there's a specific need in that area. And I would definitely favor using some of the TIF proceeds from the bonds that the public entity would issue to build academic, you know, educational facilities for the district's benefit. And that is allowed if there was a need for such.
Okay. And you, you actually mentioned something that goes to my next question. You know, well, really, why, why did the law change to allow school districts to participate in TIFs? If, if you have any background knowledge on that, I'd love to, to know.
Well, I, I was a student in CCSD schools when that law changed, but.
Don't rub that in.
So, no. And in all reality, I mean, the, the way things progressed over time, you know, when the initial law was enacted in 1984, it simply said that the municipality or county it simply said that the municipality or county creating the TIF could do so without the consent of any other taxing entities. And they had the ability to take that increment for that, you know, period of time that was allowed. And so, you know, as, as a result of the popularity of these kinds of things in the state, there was pushback from the entities that were giving up their increment to, you know, give them a voice in the matter. And instead of getting, you know, kind of a quote unquote approval, it essentially became a notification with the opportunity to opt out. But it was an assumed opt in. And then again, as things progressed and, and these districts became more valuable, you know, larger in scope, um, you know, it happened all throughout South Carolina, um, then the TIF component with the IGA came in in twenty twelve. And so that's just kind of been the, the life and times of how the economy has changed and how the legislature has wanted to look at enabling school districts and other taxing districts to participate.
Hmm. Okay. So that, that's interesting. I had hoped that what you were going to say was that there was some, uh, benefit to education systems, which was the reason that the law changed. But it was essentially like making an improvement on the law that was actually taking away and not allowing entities to come to the table. So sort of fixing a thing that was broken, but not necessarily to the end that the education systems would have some sort of benefit. And so I guess my, my next thing is really just more of a comment, um, which is, you know, to underscore that we're not in the business of property development. And there are other places, other states that don't allow school districts to participate in TIF because, um, it, it is, it is ultimately a distraction. I do, um, appreciate that there's an IGA. I do feel that, um, there could be greater benefit to the kids, um, especially since again, there will be two cycles of children who enter this system and exit before we see anything come from it. Um, at least, uh, probably more. I'm not, I'm not the math whiz. You are. So you can feel free to correct me on that. But for me, this just doesn't feel like, th- this feels like from the beginning, something that, that is a systemic issue. And, and I think it's an issue that, that we're even sitting here, having to discuss this because it's not really a benefit to the business that is supposed to be central to us.
Any further questions, Ms. Waters?
No.
Ms. McKinney?
So in preparation for two minutes this evening, I did a lot of homework. And so I do not have any questions. I do have a statement. As a teacher, my lessons frequently started with a review. So let's review recent district financial success. A unanimously passed budget of over eight hundred forty seven million dollars with the intent of no future millage increases in long range plans. Lessons frequently have questions. The question is what provisions are highlighted in the aforementioned budget? Number one, the largest starting salary for teachers in the state of South Carolina. This aided our human resources to hire a teacher for every classroom by the start of school. Number two, thirty two million dollars for weighted student funding to address the needs of people person in poverty, multilingual learners and students with special needs. Number three, all of this was done without revenue from a union peer. The lessons frequently end with a summary. How do we continue our number one priority of educating every student in Charleston County? We vote in favor of the resolution which calls for the execution of the IGA, which conditions our participation in the Union Pier TIF. That favorable vote helps our district operate more efficiently, giving us more time and more resources to educate our students. It will provide the opportunity for our students, their families and their community to have new park space, public roads, sidewalks, stormwater improvements, flooding mitigation and affordable housing. So I will put our students first and vote in favor of their future.
Dr. Temple?
Well, I told you last time I wrestle with this, um, especially all the assumptions and trying to focus on the mission that we as a school district have for promoting education. So, um, I have several questions. I'm concerned about the rush in all of this, that we have a, don't have a public hearing before we make a decision. I feel like we're, we backed up too far, um, for our district taking half of the risk that is associated with this TIF. So, um, in four minutes, I don't know if I can cover everything, but one question I did, one set of questions I did have were around seventy five Calhoun, the fourth floor. And I've asked these questions, but I didn't get answers by email. So I want to know, you know, what refurbishments have to be made to the fourth floor to make it acceptable for our employees to move over? And how much is the repainting of seventy five Calhoun going to cost? And where is that money going to come from? And then I also want to say this, I watched the city council's real estate meeting and the mayor indicated that seventy five Calhoun wasn't the favorite asset. And I understand that a lease is underway for them to, um, move their employees somewhere else. So in the interest of supporting high quality education, as a city resident, I say, give us four floor. But please answer my questions.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the first question was what's required to get the fourth floor into an occupiable form for CCSD, I believe. And so we've walked the space. Um, fortunately, the city went through and renovated that space once during their occupancy. So the restrooms and all the common areas are much more updated than the first, second, first and second floors or the second and third floors, uh, depending on how you look at it are. Um, so likely you're talking painting, carpet, ceiling tiles and lights, things that are kind of already going on throughout this building over time. But realistically, um, if we wanted to move in there tomorrow, we could. Um, so I mean, it's going to come down to an operating decision of when the best time to go through lifecycle refresh with the building would be. Um, but realistically, when the city moves out, all we would have to do is just spin up our IT network. Um, at the, you know, the ethernet ports on that floor to be able to plug in computers and phones and we'd be able to move in. We already have our HVAC control system. There's security cameras that are in by CCSD and everything up there. Um, you know, our custodians go up there and clean. Um, so it's, it's really an occupiable space as it stands now. I'll defer to Mr. Barrowey on the exterior painting. I know that that's in, I think, the, either the twenty six or twenty seven plan, um, for improvement. So we'd have to bump that up a little bit. Um, and I'm not sure if he has a cost on that in the plan as it stands now. No.
Think it'll be expensive because it'll be involved scaffolding. All right. The second thing is that I've received a lot of information. And, um, and just yesterday, I, I finally, we, we got the Ty, Tyrone report. And I just received reports, um, for the, that was a FOIA from the city. So I want to pass this out to my fellow board members.
While, while that's happening, Dr. Temple?
Yeah.
While that's happening, I did look up the amount for the, for the extra of the building. We have two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars budgeted in the FY program out of the capital sales tax from, for that project.
Repainting?
Yes, ma'am. Already, it's already in the budget. Two hundred and thirty, three, two hundred and thirty two thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars to be exact.
So I guess my first question is presenting this. Did, did our district have the advantage of this report in, um, coming up with its calculations?
Yes, ma'am. The city turned over all documents to the school district and our advisors to be able to compute. All of those numbers were based upon the city's analysis.
Okay. So in my looking at this report and looking at the reports that we got, I just want to say that it's appears to me that there's going to be plenty of money, the four hundred and forty million that's needed for infrastructure with us participating in the TIF for thirty years. And if you add up these numbers, you know, that's a possibility. Also, in, in participating in the TIF, we don't have to be involved with the desk survey, um, millage as all. So, um, I'm just concerned that CCSD is bearing half the risk of this TIF while city and county council each share a fourth of it. And, um, I just don't think it's a fair deal.
Thank you, Dr. Temple.
And what else do I want to say? Stop the time minute. Um, and the, wait, stop a minute. Okay. It also appears that in the Tyrone report, um, we're going to forego three hundred and forty five million dollars in thirty years to get back an estimated, I've seen two remarks, fourteen million, twenty million, and it's going to take us twenty five years to gain back the loss of income from the TIF. Th- this just does not make financial sense to me at all. And so I see that there's, you know, possible options. One, the three entities can participate in the TIF for fifteen years to get to the infrastructure dollars. The city and the county can carry this TIF for thirty years without our participation, uh, to get the infrastructure. All three entities can participate for thirty years, but CCSD does not need to forego its debt millage. And, you know, bottom line, CCSD doesn't have to participate. The city and county council, which are responsible for development and infrastructure, can care union peer all by themselves.
Ms. Bailey?
I have a question and a statement. My statement first is, I feel like the operational efficiency of this IGA for CCSD is very profitable for us. And, um, my question would be, if we pass this resolution and this TIF fails, what will that mean for us and CCSD?
So two, two ways to look at that. If for some reason this is adopted by the district and the city doesn't fulfill one of the requirements in the IGA, then there would be a default and it would forego our participation. So if they default on one of the conditions of the IGA, then it would back us out. Um, so that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it would be if for some reason, let's just say we execute the IGA and Union Pier never materializes, meaning it never sells and there's no tax increment generated from Union Pier. Well, we would continue to get zero dollars, just as we're currently getting from the property, but we would get the full benefit of seventy five Calhoun Street because it's simply our participation, not the success of the TIF, um, that gets us that benefit of seventy five Calhoun. So our risk from that standpoint, um, you know, is, is minimized because it doesn't condition our participation on the TIF being successful. It just conditions our participation on being part of the TIF at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, um, a lot of the questions are being asked right now. I, I want to focus on one specific thing, a couple of specific things. This is brought up at Audit and Finance a couple of times, but then also I want to say at the Cow as well. You just stated it just again, Mr. Prentice. The city gave us conditions on entering into this TIF. I have an issue with that because that, why are they giving us conditions when they are asking for our money?
So we went into the room saying we want something of value. The city asked us to participate point blank with no conditions at all. Um, they said, hey, we'd like for you guys to join one of this Union Pier TIF. We think it'd be a great opportunity for the redevelopment on the peninsula, you know, and we know, we know you're participating in a lot of TIFs right now. And our response was, we're not recommending further TIF participation without an IGA that brings in some value to CCSD upfront. Um, and so when we started talking about what that value could be, it became very clear for the TIF to be successful from an infrastructure development standpoint, that the full term was important, um, based on the way the revenues were going to flow. And so we started to add in considerations to the district such as the seventy five Calhoun component with the lease cancellation, uh, the fact that they would vacate the building by June thirtieth, so that we would get that value early and not at some point down the road. As I know, there was initially a desire for that to be longer, uh, and also the components that I mentioned earlier, such as their cap on the ability to issue bonds. And if it's more successful than projected, us getting those revenues sooner, but also us conditioning that they shall not issue bonds before June thirtieth of twenty twenty nine, um, which would allow us to collect potentially up to thirteen million dollars in revenue before the bonds are issued and that would go into the GOF as well. Uh, so all of those things were elements that we said we want to have included to ensure, you know, some fiscal benefit upfront, um, that aren't necessarily requirements of the law at all, um, but are part of the IGA. Um, and so again, the city's willingness to execute the IGA and give us those things is conditioned with the thirty years, um, you know, participation term so that they can do the things that need to be done out there and have the bonding capacity, because the less participation, the less bonding capacity that they can do in the redevelopment plan.
Exactly. So we're looking at but for, you know, but for us, then they will be able, they will, they won't do as much to Union Pier.
Think the but for CCSD Union Pier wouldn't proceed is, is the way it's being, you know, considered based on the fact that if you took CCSD's increment out altogether, their bonding capacity would be reduced to less than two hundred million dollars. And from a current cost estimate and inflated to the years that the improvements are needed to be made, um, there would be no way to construct those improvements to then support the private investment. Um, because the private investment couldn't be done without the proper water sewer drainage, et cetera, based on the condition of that property. There's certainly TIFs where you have more, uh, suburban type, type elements where you have, you know, pad ready sites that can be built on and the public infrastructure need isn't as great. Uh, but in the case of this one, you know, the infrastructure development is key to supporting the private investment. Others, like I mentioned earlier, like with the one in Mount Pleasant, you know, there was an opportunity to build things that are more, you know, like waterfront park, um, you know, which was a different kind of improvement, you know, from something like stormwater drainage, infrastructure or water and sewer.
Right. And I want to just, um, toss on to a point that you just said, uh, you know, on the property, we're not getting any tax dollars right now. However, they got two of those properties that are getting ready to come on on twenty twenty seven. If we enter into the TIF, we won't see any of that tax money from those, uh, two, uh, from those two properties after they issue those first bonds, correct?
We will incorrect until they issue the first bonds and then we would forego that increment through the term.
So even if we did not enter into it, we will still get those tax dollars off of those two properties when they come on.
Yes, and that's considered in the no participation, no TIF analysis, um, which I think has about a nine million dollar, um, net present value over thirty years. Um, so it's just the current, you know, there's three million dollars in assessed value, meaning from a revenue standpoint, that's less than five hundred thousand dollars a year to CCSD that we're currently generating from all those parcels. And then plus the additional two hundred some odd thousand dollars a year from that one particular development that's currently under construction. Uh, we can't control the, the boundaries of the TIF, but that is a parcel that they opted to include.
Right. So I also want to get down to, it feels a little to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a little about, a little bit about double dipping. So right, of, of course, right now, we don't get Union Pier. Anything that's down at, at, that the port owns, we don't get any tax money on that. But say once the Union Pier sells and it go and, um, and, um, the port moves, we know where they're going. They're going to West Rock. That's on our tax rolls right now. How much, but when they go to West Rock, we're pulling that off of our tax rolls. How much money are we going to lose from West Rock going over there? And then also Union Pier not coming going for thirty years?
So the, the West Rock property situation is, is a little bit different because I think that's under a fee. Um, so that, that's kind of a different consideration as well. I can provide you some information on that, on how that works from a tax collection standpoint. Um, but it would be going from a fee type property to a combination of tax exempt and, you know, and taxable, depending on how they parcel it out.
So we still will be able to receive something from that property even after the port authority moves there?
Yes, sir. I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example. Um, when I was in Dorchester, they bought a significant industrial park, um, that was in the Ridgeville area. And they ended up creating taxable parcels as a result of that, you know, that acquisition. And then, you know, some of them were put under new fees. And in one of them, instance was the Walmart distribution center. And so the county was bringing in, you know, or excuse me, the school district was bringing in about one point eight million dollars a year in fee revenue from that, even though it was, you know, a port authority purchased property, um, that they then parceled out after their acquisition of it.
So only if the port authority parcels out to a private, um, entity, will we be able to get that tax revenue?
It depends on, it depends on the use. Yep. It depends on how they develop it ultimately.
Right. So can we get something from the port authority saying that they, that's what their plan is to do over there? Because if we're going to Because if we're going to end up losing out, I'm not comfortable with going into it. If they're going to be able to take that, um, take that away, then one day say, all right, we're going to give it to some private entity.
So I mean, they're they're not party to the transaction by law. Um, you know, they just happen to be the owner of one of the parcels in the TIF. Um, you know, so I know that based on the Union Pier being substantially state-owned, um, you know, they're meant to have been a significant player in it, but they're not party to the overall IGA, you know, legal consideration. It's really city, school district, county.
Yeah, I'm not, that that, I'm not really worried about the IGA at that's, uh, at this point. I'm just thinking about the thirty years at um at this point with the TIF. Because if we are losing, if we're going to bring on Union Pier over the next thirty years, but we're going to lose out on West Rock, I feel like we're not even balancing out at this point. Unless they give us the, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, unless they actually parcel out the West Rock land. And they're not even, we have, we have no indication of whether they're even going to do that. They could just take that land and just sit on it, and we lose out on that, uh, on that tax money up there.
If if you give me an opportunity after the board meeting, I'd be happy to show you the the tax profile on Union, excuse me, on West Rock's property um at the port, just to give you an idea of what that looks like and how it's currently set up. I just have to to pull it out of the county system.
Oh, cool. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
You can go ahead. Um, need to re.
Mr. Calhoun, are you done?
He no, he's still, he's.
I got a minute, thirty seconds.
He's got, I'm not.
He's got one twenty-nine.
He can hold, but he can bank that. Um, please set four minutes for Ms. Wally. Ms. Wally.
So Mr. Calhoun is done. Um, sorry, let me pull up my notes here. Mr. Prentice, did you happen to, do you happen to have any of your slides on your presentation?
I do. I have everything pulled up.
Do you mind, can we, can we get it on the screen?
Um, I don't believe, well, we've tried this once, we've tried this once before. If Ms. Dangerfield can add me into the meeting, I can do a screen share. Okay, give me, give me a second here.
While you're doing that, um, I'm just, there's been a lot of really great questions. No, don't start my clock yet. This is, we're waiting on him to pull up his thing. While we're waiting on him to pull up his thing, I I um have heard a lot of really great questions tonight. I I'm kind of surprised, though, that nobody's brought up the environmental cleanup aspect of this. Um, Union Pier, I know when the aquarium, when they broke ground for the aquarium, that it triggered an EPA um investigation. And I'm nerdy enough that I actually have gone and read the EPA um report. So um I I for years have wanted this. This parcel of land developed, but didn't think it would ever be possible because of the fact that it had been used as a shipyard. And so I'm excited that the land is going to get cleaned up to begin with, so. Um, and that that I can imagine, I'm not going to ask you for any monetary analysis on that, but I can imagine that's going to be very costly. You ready?
I'm ready for you. Which slides would you like me to pull up? The first try-on presentation or the IGA?
Sorry, say that one more time?
The financial presentation or the IGA?
Um, hmm, which which do, in in light of all the questions, I don't want to double up on questions. So in light of all the questions that you've been asked, um, I'll defer to you.
Um, I I'll pull up the IGA and kind of, yeah, that's, and key components of that, if you'd like to approach it that way.
Hey, do you have one that kind of highlights? The most relevant points?
I have some, I have my, hold on one second. I have some speaking notes. I can copy these into a document, put them up on the screen.
I know, um, for, while you're pulling that up, I'm going to also just, I want to thank you for the multiple times that you've sat down with me one-on-one to thoroughly discuss this. Um, my time is running.
Well, you're asking questions.
Well, I'm waiting for him. I'm waiting for him.
Well, then we should hold off in all fairness, hold stop, in all fairness to all speakers, we should hold off until you're ready to speak.
Yeah, I don't, don't signal and stuff. I'm an elected official. I've got a right to use my time. I'm waiting for him. I'd like you to roll my clock back, please.
Ms. Wally, ask a question about and talk a statement about.
I'm waiting for him. Just, I'd like you to roll my, I'd like you to roll the clock back, please.
Go ahead.
I'd like you, I'd like full time, please.
I've got it pulled up.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Prentice, um, this one I've not seen.
This is, this was just my notes for this evening. Um, so this is just things that I was jotting down as kind of key points about the IGA. So the IGA itself, I could share that if you'd like. Um, but this is just kind of my bullet points on, you know, from a speaking standpoint.
Okay, um.
I can, I'll pull up the IGA if you'd like.
Well, okay, so in our discussions, we mentioned that um one of the things, one of the points that I wanted to, I thought you were going to pull up your highlights. One of the highlights that I I took note of in our discussion was that for thirteen years, um, because of the two parcels of real estate, we will be collecting revenue on for, um, how many years?
So we would collect from present day at the time that one of these properties goes on the tax rolls until at least twenty twenty-nine, we would be receiving all that revenue. Um, the the other indicator that you're mentioning was this break-even point under the original analysis, where we considered the economic value of seventy-five Calhoun Street. Um, that is twenty thirty-eight, uh, was the year that we saw the benefit that we received eclipsed by the forgone revenue from the TIF. Um, which, as I've mentioned in the past, also aligns with the expiration of the majority of our remaining TIFs that we're currently participating in. The most of them expire between twenty thirty-eight and twenty thirty-nine, if not sooner.
So for thirteen, fourteen years, we're actually ahead of the game.
Correct.
After the bonds are issued.
Correct.
So then that reduces that thirty-year timeframe to what, about twenty, twenty-three? That we're not collecting revenue.
It's twenty some odd years that we're not collecting revenue and we're not, you know, and our benefit has been eclipsed by the forgone revenue as a result. But the the three hundred and forty-five million dollar figure is the total forgone revenue. And if you were to add in all of the benefits, that number decreases by approximately a hundred million dollars during the term of the TIF. And then if you look at it from twenty sixty-two to twenty ninety-two, um, we actually exceed, um, you know, the value as a result of the cancellation of the lease and the revenues that we would then collect after the TIF expires during that period of time.
And when you were talking about the benefit um of not having to go and build a building for those employees out on Bridgeview, did you factor in the cost of land? It would, yeah, I know the analysis went on five hundred dollars a square foot, but did that also include the purchase of land to build on?
We didn't assume the cost of land. We we did look at the analysis that was done by operations back about five years ago, uh, which contemplated either purchasing land and building or um purchasing an existing building and retrofitting it. Um, but in this particular circumstance, we were just looking at the all-in cost to construct uh of the equivalent square footage.
So the estimated savings to the district is actually, uh, what you've given us is actually lower than what it would actually be in real, real time.
There, there are a few considerations that, you know, are hard to quantify, such as that, you know, we don't know exactly what land would look like in terms of where it's purchased. Do we currently own it? So we didn't include that. Um, we're also currently paying to park cars underneath the building because we have to buy monthly passes from the city of Charleston to pull through the Alexander Street Garage and into the Nest underneath the building. And so we won't be paying for those forty-seven spots anymore because they'll allow us to put that on our own access control. So there's a few things like that that just we didn't quantify in the analysis, um, because they were hard to determine.
And so also another highlight that I have here is that the Bridgeview office buildings save us about three hundred thousand a year, plus the three percent of growth every year, which is where the seventeen point six million dollars comes from. Um, I certainly understand that saving money over here means you have more money to use over there. So um, another highlight that I've got um is on the end of the TIF district in sixty, in twenty sixty-two, if we do not participate, we don't get any revenues from it. And if we do participate, it's approximately thirty-four million a year because it will be a uh six percent on one point two five billion dollars.
So yes, so the, if we do participate and it is developed at the two billion dollars total estimated, at the end of the term, we would estimate to collect approximately thirteen and a half million dollars a year, every single year following. Um, if we don't participate and it doesn't happen, then, you know, the the amount of revenue to be collected after the TIF would be negligible, which is included in that scenario that looks at no participation, no development.
So that, that's, so in essence, that's how we accumulate revenue on the front end and the back end. And we only forego revenue collections for about twenty-two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Then that we do not get if we don't participate.
And it doesn't proceed. If the district, if we don't participate and nothing happens out there, then we would never get it. If we don't participate and something happens out there, there would have to be nine hundred million dollars of something to generate the same value um as what we're getting in the IGA with seventy-five Calhoun and all the other benefits. And our, you know, probability analysis was that that would be highly unlikely. Um, you know, based on the, you know, the value of that land and what it would take to really develop it to its full potential.
So then let's circle back to another conversation that we had um regarding risk. So should something happen that the TIF not um work out or the development fails, um, you went over safeguards. Would, do you mind touching on those?
Yes, ma'am. So in the IGA, there's a few, um, you know, kind of risk management tools, if you will. One of those is that the school district has no responsibility for debt service on the city's bonds in excess of the increment that's generated from CCSD's millage. So if, you know, the city issues a hundred million dollars in bonds and the revenues don't support um, the debt service, the principal and interest, if you will, on the bonds that they issued, then the city is responsible for that fallback. There's no requirement for CCSD to provide additional compensation to the city for that. Um, additionally, as I mentioned in Ms. Bailey's question earlier, if nothing happens at Union Pier, the city doesn't have a clawback on what we get from seventy-five Calhoun and the other considerations. It would just be the status quo of what's there now.
And so the twenty million um a year or twenty-two million a year that we have on the other bonds, those expire around the same time that that we break even in this thirteen, fourteen-year window. So um, it is, is there anything that you feel like I'm forgetting?
No, and I think the the current TIFs, as I mentioned, the majority of them expire by twenty thirty-nine. And so if you look at what those increments would be at the point that they expire, the year, the year after, we then begin to get those revenues. Um, you know, no matter which TIF it is, as it expires, the following year, we get the full amount of revenues. So by the time Union Pier gets up to thirteen and a half million dollars a year, um, you know, what we would be foregoing from other TIFs would be significantly reduced. And we're actually projecting that we would be foregoing less revenue by twenty forty than we're currently foregoing right now in twenty twenty-four um, as a result of some of those TIFs rolling off. And of course, that um considers that CCSD wouldn't, you know, be participating in other TIFs along the way between now and then. But that gives us an opportunity to consider kind of our participation at each step along the way so that we can kind of level those in and not have a bunch that ramp up all at once and then all expire at once again um, in order to to make sure that we're getting revenue back to the general operating fund in a sensible manner.
So I just want to again um highlight that you pointed out that if it weren't for this IGA, your recommendation to us would be to not participate. So I I just want to make sure that that doesn't go by anybody because certainly if it weren't for this deal, I would not have participated.
Correct. Every TIF that I've been involved in, um, that involves a school district has had some type of intergovernmental agreement. They gave the school district something of value upfront, um, you know, that was size, not necessarily to break even um, from the standpoint of what's forgone to what's received, but to provide something early to the school district's benefit in consideration for their participation in the TIF, just as the case here.
All right, thank you. And that's, that's all.
Mr. Calhoun.
Um, I'm just going to end it with this. I think my biggest issue was about what's forgone versus what's received. Um, that we're foregoing something. We're foregoing um tax dollars that could be coming to us. And just even just looking at the first three years from like the twenty-seven to like looking at twenty-seven through thirty-two, we're looking at about eleven million, give or say eleven, twelve million, um, coming into us before they could technically, if assumed that they call it up in twenty thirty-two, and then twenty thirty-three, we hop on, um, correct?
Well, and and even those revenues, if the TIF didn't proceed, we wouldn't collect those.
Right. Well, we could technically, if the TIF did not proceed, and then in twenty twenty-seven, they put those other two properties on the tax rolls.
If they sold, um, whatever the sale value is, would go on the tax rolls at whatever, you know, assessment ratio associated with it. And then as they're developed, the land value is, you know, converted into, you know, the total improvement and everything like that.
Right. So if they come on, then we would get those tax dollars, if and when they come on. But then also looking at the first couple of years from, what, thirty to thirty-three, once we come off, we're looking at about twenty-two million, uh, foregoing twenty-two million. So we possibly save about, we possibly have forgone eleven million within that time period from our savings from twenty-seven to thirty-two. And we're, we're, I feel as if over that just small amount of time for three years, four years, we're giving up so much just for the top floor, seventy-five Calhoun.
So and and again with that, we're saying they can't issue bonds before twenty twenty-nine. But if they don't issue bonds until twenty thirty-five, we continue to collect those revenues until the point at which that transaction closes, and then that triggers everything. And that's, that's in the law. That has nothing to do with the IGA. It's just that the bond issuance is the trigger for the increment being diverted to the entity that created the TIF. What we wanted to do was ensure that, you know, if this deal was approved, they couldn't turn around and issue bonds next week. Uh, which frankly, I've been involved in TIFs before where the bonds were issued immediately upon closing, and that generates the increment directly to the entity at that point in time. So we wanted to give ourselves some space to collect some revenue upfront to the benefit of CCSD and contractually um align it instead of just saying that it's a projection. So it's, it's in the, it's in the analysis, but it's also in the IGA as an item that if they were to issue bonds in twenty twenty-eight, our participation would be, you know, able to revert.
Right. Cool. That's all, man.
So this TIF right now has no bearing on any of our budget assumptions.
Yes, sir.
So the school district in nineteen ninety-nine was able to issue or be participate in TIFs. How many TIFs is this district currently involved in since nineteen ninety-nine?
So we have, we're actively participating in eight, and we've participated in three more that have expired. Um, of the three that expired, when they expired, the total amount of revenue that we received at their expiration was around twelve million dollars a year. And then, of course, that grows as the assessed value grows over time, um, particularly through reassessment and things like that. And then the other eight that are still active, you know, their final increments to be determined as the, you know, the finality of those are reached.
So in reviewing those eight, how are you handling those in the budget consideration?
So we receive projections each year from Charleston County. Um, and we look at what the projections are for our budget, and then we go in and look at what the incremental revenues associated with the TIFs are, and we budget around that. Um, we use also a three-year composite where we look at, you know, what the historical growth has been over three years and we average that. And then we project those so that we ensure that we budget, you know, revenues properly, um, as they're expected to be received. You know, because each district grows a little bit differently. If you have um something like Union Pier, for example, where they put, you know, a billion dollars in the ground between twenty thirty and twenty forty, um, you know, we see significant increase during those years, but then we know that in twenty forty-four, there's not going to be any more development. We have to make sure that we're being sensitive to all those items. So we look at each district individually, um, to determine, you know, what these growth trajectories are, and then, you know, budget the incremental growth there.
Because, you know, I agree, it's essential to address the concerns, you know, based on primarily on probabilities, historical assumptions drawn by past TIFs. But the real question is, in looking at the past TIFs, have they materialized as expected?
So um, the one in particular, you know, if you look at the Town Center TIF that expired in twenty seventeen, that one brought in around eight million dollars at its conclusion, which was, you know, in excess of what was anticipated from that development when it was initially um put forth. And in that particular circumstance, because there was no IGA, the town of Mount Pleasant got the full value of that incremental growth over time. With this IGA, if that was to happen, we would get prorata components of that revenue along the way um, above and beyond their debt service requirements. And I mean, in full transparency, I was, I I worked for the town of Mount Pleasant at the time that that TIF uh was cascading. And they were able to build Memorial Waterfront Park with the pay-as-you-go revenue generated from CCSD and the other taxing entities increment, because there was no condition agreement that said that if the revenue exceeded the bond debt service, that it would come back.
So, so clarify that, because I think that's critical. If the TIF performs better than anticipate, we reap additional rewards beyond the initial expectations.
And and during the term of the TIF, correct? So if if the city's debt service on the bonds is ten million dollars a year in a particular year, and the TIF generates eleven million dollars that year, then we would get our prorata share of that million that year, which would be about fifty percent of it.
And once all the bonds are paid off, then what happens?
Then we get everything. And across the district, it's G O F revenue, it's not restricted for any particular purpose. And based on the audit requirement that we have in the I G A, we would know what that revenue is is being derived from, and we'd be able to budget for it, you know, each subsequent fiscal year. As we knew what the city's debt service requirement is, because if they issue bonds with a thirty-year term, we know what they owe each year. And if we know that, you know, the increment is growing greater than the debt service on the bonds, then we can project what that additional revenue would be and use that revenue to support, you know, district-wide programming in the G O F.
I'm sorry. So based off of what you, based off of that, where could the possible first time that could actually happen? That we get over that four hundred thousand, that four hundred million? Like around what year could we possibly see something realize like that?
It could happen. It could happen in the third year. I mean, frankly, in one of the TIFs I've been involved in in the past, the increment grew in excess of the debt service by the third or fourth year of the TIF. But it just depends, you know, it it depends on how fast it's developed, you know, in alignment with the analysis. And, you know, in that particular instance, I don't think that the district had a clawback on the revenues generated over the debt service. So it just went into the money that the entity was able to use for pay-as-you-go. But in our circumstance, if that was to happen, we would get all that money back. And the way the I G A reads is upon their knowledge that that increment exists above their debt service, they have thirty days to turn it over to us.
A TIF within any of the other districts recently that that has happened in? So like be it Dorchester and Orangeburg or Berkeley and Dorchester, have anybody else seen anything like that recently? Where files have went over and it over exceeded the value that they wanted?
I believe the town of Somerville did in one about two years ago. That was the first one that I was aware of, and that was part. What's that?
School district was part of it?
Yes, sir. There was an I G A.
Maybe my time. So in twenty thirty-eight and twenty thirty-nine, we have TIFs that are going to be coming off and taxable incomes will be coming into the district.
And actually, in in twenty-eight and thirty-two as well, there's there's a number of years between now and twenty thirty-nine where we have TIFs expiring.
And in analyzing those TIFs, are we anticipating that we're going to get more taxes, rev, potential tax revenue than what we're getting right now?
Yes. So if you look at the total on all of them cumulative on expiration, it's about fifty-two million dollars a year to C C S D. At various points in time, of course.
And currently we're deriving no rev, you know, revenue whatsoever from this property.
Correct.
And it's Port Authority, which is a, you know, enterprise agency, which is a state agency and doesn't pay school district tax. So no matter where they go.
Correct. They pay fees. So they pay stormwater and solid waste fees, and that's it. They don't pay any taxes to any entity across across the the district.
And and the reason I bring that up, Patriots Point just released their impact study in which they talked about all this. And the, I think the amount of tax dollars to the state was five million dollars for the whole property. So it seems like depending on the leases and lease agreements, it's very difficult when you're dealing with state agencies and state land to collect taxes.
And that's that's one of those considerations that I mentioned to Mr. Calhoun's question earlier. Of course, if they execute a long-term land lease or something like that and private entity develops, then of course that is taxable. So it just works a little bit differently depending on the use.
So going to the back out and the closing down of these process, right now as it stands, if we pass this resolution, the next step is the county has the public hearings and then the county makes the final decision as whether this is going to happen or not.
The city would, yes, sir.
The city, the city will make the decision.
The the I G A would be referenced as a component of their ordinance at second reading. And so if the ordinance is approved at second reading after the public hearing is held, then that would put the I G A in full force and effect to condition our participation. And the way this I G A is written, they have to execute the rescission of their rights in seventy-five Calhoun in conjunction with the execution of all documents. So there's not some subsequent lease rescission that has to occur. It all happens at the same time.
And that anticipated final date is what?
They would be, so we would execute documents in conjunction with their second reading. So that would be on the fourth, and then they would have until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five to move out, turn over the additional parking and the easements and everything like that that are required.
What happens if the city does not approve the second reading?
Then there's no, there's no I G A. We're not participating.
All the way back and start the process all the way back from the beginning if they don't approve their second reading?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, and that's not a school district process. That's just if they don't approve second reading. Now, they could, in particular circumstance, opt to delay second reading. You know, but it's second reading that triggers the I G A.
So if the county, say, if they pull out, are they still going to be, are we still going to be stuck onto the conditions that we have in this I G A?
This I, this I G A is between us and the city, doesn't condition the county's participation or anything like that.
So it's just us and the city?
They're, they can, they can consider their own increment. We understand that they're considering their own I G A after understanding that C C S D was using an I G A as the mechanism to negotiate. That's not, I don't believe that an I G A has ever been used as a means of negotiating a TIF in Charleston County.
And so the final sale negotiations between the state and the developers, should that all fall apart after the final reading and the I G A's agreed, we still have everything, all the assets that the city's giving us.
Correct. They have no, no clawbacks in the I G A. Those are given to us upon final, final reading and approval. And no matter what happens with the TIF, the land sale or anything like that, they're ours to keep perpetually.
The way I look at it, supporting this I G A is not merely a matter of wearing the risk, but it's embracing a proactive strategy that benefits our district. We have the opportunity to transform a stagnant asset into a vibrant resource that supports our financial health and ultimately enriches our students' educational experiences. With that, I am closing all discussion on this motion, and I would ask that the motion be brought up for vote. Ms. Waters, are you still there and able to vote?
Yes, I did. I voted on board docs.
Thank you. And the motion passes. With that, we will move on to item six, our next order, business convene in executive session to receive legal advice on matters involving student issues. Do I have a motion? To move into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to return to general session. Second, all in favor? We are now back into general session. Please bring it up for vote. And the motion passes on to item nine B, student placement appeal.
Move to a vote the constituent board's decision.
Do I have a second? Please bring it up for vote.
Yeah. Kathy's going to not being paid to be here right now.
And the motion passes up to item nine C, student placement appeal. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Please bring it up to vote. And the motion passes on to nine D, do I have a motion on a student enrollment appeal?
I move to overturn the constituent board's decision to place a student at, I guess this will be down because it's an academy until successful completion of the program.
Second.
Please bring it up for vote. And the motion passes on to item ten, policies A. The question for the board is a motion to approve policies IJ, IJK, IJKAA, IJKAA dash R, KE, KEC, and KEC dash R for a second reading. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
If I may, I move to approve with the exception of the administrative rules that are not ours to approve. I, I move to approve everything you just listed except the dash Rs.
Yeah, but thank you, Mr. Kelly, that we, we included the R, we don't tip, we typically send the Rs to the board in the board brief because they're management of policies. Because of the complex nature of these policies, we included them here to make sure the board, so Mr. Kelly is accurate in that you don't necessarily need to approve the Rs, but the policies associated. Thank you. Yeah, we apologize, it's, it's how we, and we've discussed, it's, it's my, it's my fault that there's confusion. My, my apologies. We've listed the Rs there, but you don't have to approve them.
That's not, it's not a fault. Not a fault.
Well.
The, the poli, uh, board policy doesn't allow us to approve administrative rules.
I appreciate that. My goal was to make things easier.
There a second, Mr. Kelly's motion?
I think that was highlighted at the first reading, but I, I'm, I guess it just carried over the way that it was presented.
Oh, yeah, I was second, I just want to make note that on side of board docs has those, the action ones that we're actually making action on and information ones that are just there for information, so we.
We tried to do.
It's, it's there, it's just, we just need to say it correctly, that's the only thing that's, so. Yep, all the ones that are for action point background.
I, I agree with Mr. Calhoun, they are stated correctly without the exception of what is recommended, they recommend in action. It is stated within the motion.
Right, so I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any debate on the policies?
Are we going to move to?
We all just voted.
Yeah, we just voted, so we're going to ten B?
But, yeah.
Okay, so we gotta go to ten.
I think we took a voice vote, Ms. Trudy.
Yeah.
He has sent it.
On to item ten B. The question for the board is a motion to approve policy KBD for the first reading. Have a motion?
I still move.
Second?
Second.
Any debate? Any debate?
I just have a question, we had gotten a letter from the PTA, National PTA, has that been all resolved in this policy?
Thank you, thank you for that, Dr. Temple, we, there was a litany of emails back and forth, we took you all off, so you didn't have to be engaged, Mr. Prentice has the latest update.
Yes ma'am, so we've made two changes, one of which is to add the language if required with respect to filing with the Secretary of State, since certain organizations may be exempt from that, so it just, you know, considers the conditioning in the law there, the other is the donation of funds from a dissolved PTA organization, there was some concern about the PTAs being required to give the funds to CCSD as their standard bylaws require that they're given to a nonprofit, so we've inserted the CCSD Foundation as that nonprofit as it would be our belief that funds contributed locally should remain local, I'm not sure that the SCP TA is supportive of that, although our attorney's recommendation is that is compliant with their bylaws, so that's what our recommendation was.
Why not the school, if it's a PTA that raised money?
Has to be a.
And has to be a 501(c)(3), so that, that was the, the clarifying piece that we were recommended to abide by, and the CCSD Foundation would meet that requirement.
Okay, thank you for asking clarity, Dr. Temple.
Any further questions, debate, I'll close the floor for debate and ask to be brought up to vote. And the motion passes on to item ten C, the question before the board is a motion to approve the policy JICJ for first reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I'll open the floor up for debate, any questions or?
As I recall, there was another document, because we had, we had discussed about the superintendent giving permission, and then we talked about the superintendent designating the principal, is that because, is that an R?
Yes ma'am.
AICJR?
Yes ma'am, I, we sent out this week a draft of the procedures related to this, and it does just that, it allows principals to decide in their schools when cell phones and working collaboratively with teachers when cell phones may or may not be used, so yes ma'am, that'll be in the management of, but that's in the, the draft, and I'll send that, I'll, I'll send that link out again tonight, Dr. Temple.
I saw that, but I was just thinking, the last part, excuse me, the, in A, we had the policies, and then we also.
Yes ma'am, and again, it goes back to our need to be consistent, we, we normally send Rs in the board brief, and just because of the complex nature of A, we included them here. And, and again, since it doesn't require board approval, we don't typically include them in the, in the board docs for the actual meetings.
I like it in board docs.
It allows for us to, to be able to collect that in writing, which is what the policy refers to, so that we can have a record of.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Clean Up, absolutely.
Mr. Kelly, you have any questions?
No sir.
Ms. McKinnon, Ms. Bailey, Chicago.
This is second reading.
First. Sorry about the cow.
Ms. Watley, Roberson. Ask, go close it and ask you bring it up for votes, please. And the motion passes, next item is item eleven, which is upcoming meetings, there will be November fifth.
Yeah, I think we're gonna move that, they shouldn't be working on it.
Mr. Mr. Gobasky, I, I hate that to, to ask for one more quick item of business, and certainly we can defer it, on item five A, it appears Ms. Foxworth just advised that.
She has to present.
It.
Oh no, wait, do you, go ahead.
Ms. Foxworth, no, you're good, it looks on five A, Ms. Foxworth just advised that you all have the correct attachment in board docs, but the motion may not have been accurate, the language, we might ask you to at, at, at the board's will reconsider five A for the purpose of approving the accurate motion, Mrs. Foxworth, would you like to describe more fully?
Out in finance, I submitted our, our annual June through September finance report, and so what you approved, it seemed how, somehow was carried over from June, and so your attachment was correct, but the motion was incorrect, the motion should just be a, a motion to approve the financial documents from June to August.
I'm more to reconsider.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now to reconsider, we need to file the proper.
Right.
And so the proper motion for the board, the question before the board would be for motion to approve the June through.
September twenty twenty four.
September financial expenses.
Yes sir, our apologies.
Do you have a second?
No worries, Ms. Foxworth.
Any debate, hearing none, could you please bring the motion up for debate? I mean up for vote.
I probably.
Before we do that.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Uh, before we do that, you don't have to present it all over again, because you presented it all in finance, okay, cool, I just wanted to make sure, aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously by voice vote. Now on to item eleven, upcoming meetings, we may have a November fifth twenty twenty four audit and finance committee meeting, that'll be up to Mr. Calhoun's decision as to whether we need to reschedule or not, November eleventh twenty twenty four will be the committee of the whole, and November eighteenth twenty twenty four would be the board of trustees meeting. With that, we're up to item eleven B, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
Second, all in favor? We'll adjourn.